Call this meeting of the Housing Authority for the City of Salem for Monday, July 8th to order if the recorder will call the roll.
Vice Chair Kaiser, Commissioner Anderson.
Likewise.
Commissioner Niki is absent. Commissioner Leung.
Here.
Commissioner Osik is absent.
He's here somewhere.
Chair Hoy.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Thank you, and if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance for all.
All right, we have nobody signed up to address the Housing Authority. Commissioner Kaiser, consent calendar?
Thank you, I move the consent calendar with the following polls. That's 3.3A by Commissioner Anderson.
We have a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Okay. On the consent calendar, we have 3.1A, which are June 24, 2019 draft Salem Housing Authority Minutes. We have 3.2A, which is a first amendment. Sorry, we're going to pull that one.
3.3A.
3.2A, sorry. 3.2A, First Amendment to the Grand Agreement between the Salem Housing Authority and City of Salem for operation of the homeless rental assistance program. And 3.3A is being pulled. 3.3B, Salem Housing Authority's 2019-20 Public Housing Authority Plan, Annual Capital Fund Plan and Five-Year Plan.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. We have no public hearings. Special Order of Business would be item 3.3A. Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
I pulled this, Administrator Oots, because I think this ought to be publicized a little more. And the demolition disposition has sort of an ominous sound to it, so, but it seems like a good program, and I see that Ms. Blakely is here, maybe she can offer some explanation. But it also, once again, seems like part of the problem that S.H.A. and other housing authorities across the country are having is that the Department of Housing and Urban Development appears to be doing everything it can to make it harder for people at the local level to provide low-income housing. I'm not expecting you to talk about that, I just want you to talk about what you mean by demolition and disposition, because it really does sound like eventually it's a good deal. But if you just look at it, it's, we're going to demolish and dispose of houses.
Hi, my name is Jessica Blakely. Oh, I don't touch it. Oh, sorry, it's my first time with a microphone. I'm Jessica Blakely, I'm the asset manager at Salem Housing. Yes, demolition disposition also felt really weird to me when I first looked at it. What it is, basically, is allowing us to transfer our public housing stock into a different program. And so, just like with the RAD conversion, which is what we were already going to participate in.
I'm sorry, Ms. Blakely, RAD?
RAD. It's a rental assistance demonstration. And so, it's basically what we're doing right now with five of the multifamily buildings, is we're transitioning the public housing stock and converting it into a different program. So it will no longer be under Section 9, it'll be under Section 8, which is a better-funded program. And so, it doesn't change the fact that it's a housing authority building, it just means that we own it and HUD doesn't. And so, we're converting them away from public housing and into kind of like a private market would be, where we're the owner and we manage it.
So, you're converting it away from any authority that HUD might have over the current program now?
Under the public housing program, correct.
Good.
Which is having some funding problems. So, in this new program that we're proposing is that we don't go through the RAD conversion like we are currently with our existing stock, rather, we're going to be smaller and we have the scattered homes, which are kind of around all of the Salem area, which makes it harder to manage. So what we're going to do, or what we want to do, is to convert them through Section 18, which basically does the same, it allows us to become the owner, and the residents that are in the homes right now will receive a voucher. And so, they'll be able to take their voucher with them into the community and rent somewhere else if they want to, or they can stay in the house until they're done. So it will remain us as the owner.
But once the current renter moves out, we would then sell that property.
We would then sell it, the money would go into a pool for us to build new housing.
Commissioner Lewis.
I'm just curious to add on to that, is there an opportunity for any of these residents, like, to lease and then own?
Yes. It would be sold on fair markets, so they could potentially purchase the home.
Commissioner Cook.
It sounds like this gives some stability when the market has some volatility to help allow for that flexibility and stabilizing of the housing and properties that are available. Is that what you're trying to do?
Yes, correct. So if we were to continue on with the process of converting through RAD, we would have to rapidly build a new property very quickly, and we would have to basically move all of those people into this community rather than allowing them to stay in their current home. This allows us the flexibility to keep them as tenants with their vouchers for as long as they may want to, and slow the process down a lot until the market kind of changes a little bit and allows for more units available at all, available in the market. So we're thinking that this process will allow these folks an extra three to five years to figure out, do they want to move, do they want to stay? Some might want to move to a different part of town. It gives them the flexibility with their own voucher.
And then if I understand correctly, this will allow us to build maybe when building costs are much lower, as compared to now, which building costs, as we're going to talk about later, are very high.
Correct.
So this would allow us that opportunity to take advantage of that down market.
It allows us to slow it down a little bit, yes.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Information reports.
Good evening, I'm Nicole Yuss, I'm the acting housing administrator for Salem Housing Authority. So in front of you, you'll see a fantastic report of a family that was stabilized through our family self-sufficiency program. And I just wanted you to take note of that, that that is one of the assets of the housing authority we provide in our mission. It's full wraparound, that not everybody who walks through the door is ready to go into this program, but during the years that they live in their house, they're able to get on and apply for family self-sufficiency and receive wraparound services, whether they're on Section 8 or public housing. Those individuals also can have a case manager that can help walk them through credit and different challenges, finding jobs, and eventually maybe homeownership. And this is a great story of an individual who made that choice as well. You'll also notice that our portfolio occupancy levels are still great for the affordable housing and public housing projects. Our voucher lease-up remains well. The Family Unification Program, which is a one that is referred to by the DHS program, is the one that remains set at 79 percent. We just need to get more referrals for that program. And then, the HRAP program stayed consistent, but we do have two new lease-ups over the next week, so we're happy to get a couple of new landlords this week, which was great. And on top of that, we did have the HRAP graduation during the pouring rain last week.
call the roll.
Board Member Kaiser.
President.
Board Member Anderson.
So, we had 35 graduates out of that program.
Dito.
Board Member Niki is absent. Board Member Leung.
Here.
Board Member Osik.
Here.
There's a total of 51 that are in process to move from the HRAP program to the voucher.
Board Member Hoy.
Here.
Board Member Cook.
Here.
Board Member Lewis.
Here.
Thirty-five of those received their first certificate for being able to stabilize out
Chair Bennett.
Here. Any additions or deletions, Councilor Hoy? Are there any additions or deletions?
of the program.
No.
Any questions about the information report?
Okay. Public comment? I have no one signed up for public comment. Did anyone want to address the Urban Renewal Agency?
I just wanted to comment, and thank you for sharing that story.
Okay.
I thought it was an amazing success story, and it really helps to understand in real-life
And then the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar with the following exception, item 3.3A pulled
terms what the work that you're doing, and so I really appreciate being able to read
by Counselor Osik.
about that.
Second.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, also 3.3B pulled by Counselor Anderson.
Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing nothing else before us, we are adjourned.
I apologize.
Okay.
All right, so the remainder of the consent calendar would be item 3.1A, the June 24, 2019 draft Urban Renewal Agency Minutes. We have item 3.3C, the Salem Convention Center Marketing Eventum for fiscal year 2020. Item 3.3D, the North Gateway Urban Renewal Area Project Funding for fiscal year 2020. Item 3.3E, use of Riverfront Urban Renewal Area Funds for Division Street Improvements. And that is the consent calendar.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. All right. I have no public hearings. Counselor Osik, what's your pleasure on 3.3A?
I'll move staff recommendations.
Second.
Second, by the way. Go ahead.
And just, I pulled this because as a member of the committee, I had plenty of opportunity to ask questions about the details of this, and I wanted to afford others.
Counselor, could you speak into the microphone? I'm in a little trouble here, I'm sorry.
So I wanted others to have the opportunity to hear from staff and get some of the details of the reasoning for this and what the impacts would be if it wasn't moved forward, so.
Counselor Cook.
I have a question for staff, or just an opportunity for some more information.
Right.
So it came up in my ward that the original police bond that was passed that did not go through was funded for a specific amount. And there's been some speculation that the current police bond, when you add in all of these additional funds due to escalating costs, there's been this question of, well, aren't we just funding a police station that didn't really come through with the bond? Which I don't believe is the case, based on the plans, it was a much different building. But I would really like to take this opportunity to educate people that have that concern, that we are being transparent with these funds, and they're going exactly for what was passed, and we are making good on that commitment to the people in Salem, if that makes sense.
It does. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you. If members of the Urban Renewal Advisory Board would like, we have a presentation, which I think will highlight both Member Osik and Member Cook's requests for additional information, and make sure you and the public are fully informed of the recommendation that's before you this evening. And we can move through it pretty briskly and certainly then respond to questions you might have after the presentation. So I believe Alan Danan is teed up and ready to go.
Good evening. Alan Danan with Public Works Engineering. I'm here tonight on behalf of the entire Salem Police Station project team, including our owner's representative from Day CPM, our designers from CB2 Architects and DLR Group, our contractor, J.E. Dunn Construction, and members of the staff and management from the Police Department. And my job tonight is just to provide background of why the requested budget actions are necessary to fulfill the original promise of the bond that was passed back in May of 2017. So, starting out with just a quick overview of where we are with our schedule, this is probably a good time to remind everybody that we're using an alternate contracting method for this project called CMGC, which stands for Construction Manager/General Contractor. And that method provides us with several benefits. It allows the contractor to be hired early on in the design process and collaborate with us about the best way to build the project and give us real-time feedback about construction costs. And we can incorporate those, or that collaboration, to respond to the market pressures that we're going to talk about here in a second, and make immediate course corrections in the design before it's too late. And all that work goes with our contractor working towards a guaranteed maximum price for the job, which we're ready to finalize and execute after tonight's decision. So, I think it's important to point out at this point that had we used a traditional contracting method, usually known as low-bid contracting, we'd be in a much worse budget situation than I'll be presenting here tonight. The design would have gone on without that contractor input, we would have put the project out for bid a few months ago, and most likely would have had a significantly higher budget challenge to be facing, because we couldn't have incorporated all that good feedback about how to try to bring this project closer to our cost targets. One other benefit of CMGC contracting is it allows early work. So while the design's being completed, and you can see here, we're working on design, we were working on design through the spring, finishing up in March and April, some elements of the work that were already designed, such as the site and earthwork, underground utilities, and then moving into building foundations and structural concrete, we were able to get that under contract, lock in pricing, and try to avoid some of the market impacts that we would have seen had we contracted that work later. Right now, we're here in the middle of 2019, in July of 2019, so you can see we're in the heart of construction. And if you've been by the site, you can see that things are moving quickly, and the time is now to execute that guaranteed maximum price with our contractor, so that they can continue on towards the goal of completing the building by September of 2020. I just wanted to show you a quick snapshot of construction activities as they've gone on here over the last year. So this is what the site looked like almost a year ago. The site had been cleared and demolished of the former car dealership buildings, and we were ready to start construction. Not too long after this, we got underway with site work and moved into foundation work. By spring of this year, foundations were going in, and we were starting to work on columns, walls, and stairwells for the first floor. Just a month later, the first floor was complete, and we were forming up the second floor. A month after that, second floor was nearly complete. You can see we're starting to form up columns and walls to reach up to the third floor. Last month, third floor construction ongoing. And this is just from a few days ago. You can see that now we're working on the roof. So again, just highlighting that construction is moving quickly. J.E. Dunn has put together a deep organization to keep everything running on time, and that's good, because it helps us meet our schedule goal, but it also comes with a considerable amount of overhead to keep that team running. And so the city's job is to make prompt decisions to avoid delays that would extend the cost of that overhead, and again, help us meet our schedule target. So the primary reason we're here tonight is conditions in the construction market, and it's no surprise that construction, the construction market is hot nationwide and has been for several years now. And I won't go through all this data in detail, but I think the key factors to note are construction costs have been increasing steadily for several years, and that Portland and our area has been performing ahead of nationwide averages. We've seen cost index increases between 1.5 and 2 percent every quarter, which when you compound that out, that amounts to somewhere around a 7 percent annual increase. That's more than twice what we had in our original estimates when the measure was put Again, doing some early work has helped counteract some of the hottest market sectors, but we've still got work to be done that we need to get under contract, where we're seeing the full force of these price impacts. There's several factors that go into this. One that's been in the news, of course, is material prices, especially items affected by tariffs, steel and aluminum. But because of the hot construction market, all construction supplies are in demand, and higher demand leads to higher prices. The, another factor is shortage of labor, so especially skilled labor in the trades.
Alan, could, could Counselor Hoy interrupt you for just a second?
Sorry to interrupt you during your presentation, but as a member of the committee, I've had the opportunity to review this slide and to hear some more in-depth discussion about it. But the thing that I think that's really important to note, also, maybe it's coming up, but you've made some modifications to the design of the building because of those issues you just discussed with the tariffs and things, and because of the process that we're using, we're able to do that. I think it'd be, I hope you're going to highlight that.
Absolutely, yeah, it's on the next slide.
Great.
You're right. You're right in line. You're right in line.
Of course.
So, again, labor shortages, especially in skilled labor, means that crews are working long hours, their productivity goes down in those situations. Contractors try to bring on new skilled laborers, but they're less experienced, and so again, that impacts productivity. When labor's in demand, wages tend to go up. And then finally, we know there's over a billion dollars of public work just here in the Salem area that's either underway now or in the hopper to begin very soon. And so contractors can simply pick and choose which projects they want to bid, there's decreased competition, and again, that puts upward pressure on pricing. This is not a unique problem to Salem, we've certainly seen similar news about projects in Beaverton, Clackamas County, and Portland Public Schools has been in the news recently with significant budget problems. So getting to your comment, Counselor Hoy, again, with the advantage of our collaboration with the contractor, the project team has been working continuously since the bond passed to try to fight these market factors. And the first, one of the first, very first measures we took is how can we try to shrink this building into a smaller size and still deliver everything that was included in the bond? And we did that by researching other agencies and touring other agencies' buildings to figure out exactly how we could fit everything we need in an efficient and compact way. And that allowed us to shave 11,000 square feet off the size of the building, so a significant reduction in the size of the building and a significant help with the cost pressure. From there, again, to your point, Counselor, as we moved into more detailed design, we were able to research material selections, so the type of structure, structural concrete versus steel, again, knowing the cost pressures in that sector of the market, the type of structural concrete used for the parking garage that's easier to assemble, and an alternate foundation system that avoided both the time and cost of deeper excavation to extend the traditional foundations further to the good-bearing soils. All of that, again, helping with cost pressures. And then going to finer detail, as we moved into the final design, our team has worked with the police staff to go through essentially every building system in detail to look for ways to cut costs while still delivering on the promise, and really trying to draw that line between what we absolutely need and what is really a nice-to-have. And I'll give a kind of simple example, and that's just as simple as looking at all the electrical and data outlets in every room. And although it doesn't sound like much, if you could trim one or two of those out of a room, if you can do that times 50 or 60 across the building, it adds up to significant savings. And that's just one example. That kind of analysis went into the security systems, the roofing system, windows, carpets, flooring, locker room, et cetera, et cetera. The last thing I want to say about that effort is, there was really two, I think, guiding principles in mind. One is while we're looking for those cost savings opportunities, not to be penny-wise and pound-foolish. So again, going back to my simple example, for cutting outlets and data ports out of a room that we know someday may be occupied by two people as the growth of the building, as the growth of the staff in the building occurs, it doesn't make sense to cut the outlets and data ports back to only one for that room, because someday we're going to need another one, and it's going to cost more to install at that time than it would now. So, again, trying to draw that line between penny-wise and pound-foolish. And then finally, always with the idea in mind, and it says up here, to provide the station that we promised to the public that will be efficient, safe, welcoming, and last, and serve the community for decades to come.
Thank you. Are you not done?
I'm going to, I've got a bit more.
You wrapping her up on that?
Just to go over the budget actions here, sorry. So this is just a high-level overview of where we are with the budget. We're about $75 million is all in total funding, and I want to explain a little bit of what's included there, and this gets to your question, Counselor Cook. So that includes not only the bond funds, but also the bond premium and interest that comes with that, and then other funds that have been allocated for the job in the budget process, so Public Works, previously approved urban renewal funding. And it also includes, and I want to point this out, because transportation, the Division Street project comes up separately, it includes that work as well. And just a reminder for everybody, the Division Street improvements are not only work in front of the, in front of the station on Division Street, but also the intersections at Commercial and Liberty, and then along Liberty Street from Mill Creek all the way south to Marion Street, so a significant project there. Total cost at this point, and these numbers will change a little bit as we finalize the details with J.E. Dunn, but it's just over $78 million. And I want to make sure, again, to note that that includes not only construction, but all the other costs that go along with the construction, so property purchase, design, furniture and equipment, et cetera. The variance here is really due to construction costs, all our other categories are running on budget. And the total shortage you can see here is about three, just under $3.3 million. One other thing to note, we are carrying contingency funds for the owner, the city here, to mitigate risk during construction, and we have accounted for a release of some of those funds to help bridge the gap here, but there's not enough contingency in the budget to fully cover the gap. So lastly, there's really four actions requested tonight. One of them's, one of them's already been approved on the consent agenda, but it's really because there's two separate projects in the Urban Renewal Budget, one for the station itself and one for the street improvements. So we're asking for authorization of additional funds in the amount of $2,660,000 for the station and $633,000 for Division Street. And both of those then need to have a grant agreement authorized to grant the funds to the city, and then later on tonight at City Council, there's two corresponding actions to accept those grant funds.
Very good, thank you. Counselor Lewis?
Alan, could you go back to the previous slide? I want to make sure the overall budget of $75 million is, takes into consideration the reduction of the 11,000 square feet?
It sure does, yeah, that's.
And what was the original square footage?
Original square footage was 115,000 square feet, and we're at about 104,000 now.
So 10 percent, we've reduced the size by 10 percent, which is, would appear to me to be the biggest reason that we are as close to budget as we are right now.
Certainly, yeah, that was definitely an early measure that helped.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you. What kind of impact will this have on the bond rating moving these funds? Will this not have? Just curious, not sure if it will or won't, just asking.
I might need a finance person to help me with that question.
Well, I think rather than the bond rating impact, a question that you should be asking is what impact will this have on other urban renewal priorities and other urban renewal projects within the downtown Riverfront Urban Renewal Area? And Director Rutherford can answer that question.
Good evening, Kristen Rutherford, Urban Development Director. So these funds would be outside of the bonded funds, and would just essentially be extra cash that we're bringing to the table from the Urban Renewal Agency. We are pulling these funds from budgeted line items within our upcoming budget, from the Streetscape budget, and that would leave about $1.8 million within that Streetscape project line item, where, that will allow us to continue to move forward with design. And this project will be implementing elements of the Streetscape plan, so I think it's reasonable and appropriate to use those funds for the project. The other two line items that funds would be coming from are our capital grant project, that line item. So it just means that for one year, we're not going to be able to grant out quite as much money. We're still going to have, it's, right now it's a $7 million line item, so we're looking at having about $5.7 million left in that line item after this transfer to the police station. We're still going to be able to provide grant funding to any of the projects that we're currently aware of that are in our
I might need a finance person to help me with that question.
Well, I, I think rather than the bond rating impact, a question that you should be asking is what impact will this have on other urban renewal priorities and other urban renewal projects within the downtown riverfront urban renewal area? And Director Rutherford can, can answer that question.
Good evening. Kristin Rutherford, Urban Development Director. So these funds would be outside of the bonded funds and would just essentially be extra cash that we're bringing to the table from the Urban Renewal Agency. We are pulling these funds from budgeted line item, line items within our upcoming budget, from the Streetscape budget, and that would leave about, about 1.8 million dollars within that Streetscape project line item where, that will allow us to continue to move forward with design. And this project will be implementing elements of the Streetscape plan. So I think it's reasonable and appropriate to use those funds for the project. The other two line items that, that funds would be coming from are our capital grant project, that line item. So it just means that for one year, we're not going to be able to grant out quite as much money. We're still gonna have, it's, right now it's a 7 million dollar line item. So we're looking at having about 5.7 million left in that line item after this transfer to the police station. We're still going to be able to provide grant funding to any of the projects that we're currently aware of that are in our queue. Then because it's a one-time expenditure, next year as we collect more tax increment, you know, we'll, we'll be kinda back to normal for the grant program. Then the other line item is unspecified future projects. So we would be taking a little over a million dollars, 1.3 million from that. We, that would leave us with about 600,000 dollars in that line item that we could transfer to another project, or if something unanticipated comes up that we're to need funding. So, and then it's not gonna impact any of the other projects that are currently in the queue, that will remain untouched and whole.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Counselor Henderson?
I'm not sure if this is directed to Director Rutherford or to Mr. Danant, so I'll ask. On that, on that slide up there, what you show is the variance right now is 3.293 million dollars. And there's a difference between the 4.7, 4,750,000 that you're asking for of about, I don't know, 10, 1 million something. Where does, you know, so you're, you're asking for more than your current variance is. So why are you asking for more? Is that because you think that the actual projected cost may go up?
No. So to, to clarify the requested action, there's 2,85,000 already approved in the current budget that was the subject of a previous request.
Sure, sure.
And so the additional 2,660,000 goes on top of that for the total grant of both amounts that's included here.
Yeah, I understand that from a conversation with Director Rutherford this afternoon that we already approved that. And the reason we approved it is because it comes under the sort of items that in urban development, in urban renewal agency, urban development would normally spend. Streets, restrooms for the public, public art, the public plaza, the community room. I understand all that. And so I know in effect, we're really only doing 2, 2,660,000 today because we already approved a little over 2 million. My question is, if you add 4,750,000 dollars to 75 million dollars, you come up with more than 78 million dollars, which is the actual projected cost?
That, that 2,85,000 is included in this total here.
Okay.
Already.
Okay, got it.
Counselor Young?
Thank you. Director Rutherford, I have a question for you. When you were giving us the numbers, I had a question about the third one. It was unsecured future projects, of which 1 million was gonna be removed, leaving 600,000 left?
It's unspecified future projects, that's right.
Unspecified, sorry.
Mm-hmm. And we are, it's a 1.9 million dollar line item, and we would be transferring 1.3 million to the police station project, and we would have 600,000 remaining within that line item.
Does that, a line, does that line item every year get replenished back to its normal as well?
It does. Yeah, it's sort of like the ending fund balance, or in, so if there are projects that we're not currently anticipating that come up, or let's say that we want to put additional funds into a grant project, something like that, then we can transfer from that line item.
Okay. Cause I just wanted to make sure, because you were saying for the capital grant, next year the money that was taken out would be put back in there, so that same would apply for that unspecified future projects as well? Where the 1.9 million will be back in there next year?
So I'll say yes, sort of, because that will all be determined through the budgeting process. So it could be reallocated a little differently with the upcoming tax increment and budget. It may be that we're moving into implementation of Streetscape, and so we budget less in some categories and more towards Streetscape construction.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Ms. Danant, just one last question. Are you ever gonna come back on this again? Is this it? This'll be the last run at us?
This is it. I don't ever wanna come back on this again.
Okay. Good, I'm counting on that one then.
That kinda hurts my feelings.
Recorder, could you underline that in a minute? Danant won't be back. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Counselor Anderson?
With respect to item 3.3D, I move the staff recommendation.
Second by Hoy.
This is something that Director Rutherford is very familiar, and I think to some extent Director Fernandez too, and I know the city manager is. For the longest time, we've been trying to get a bike ped path from Bush's Pasture Park all the way to the river, and by that I mean both Riverfront Park and Wallace Marine Park. And the last real missing link there is how do you get from the south side of Pringle Creek to the north side of Pringle Creek without having to walk up at Commercial Street and cross the street and then go someplace? So for the longest time, I've been very interested in what I call a hanging bridge. And I know there's some other definition for it, but I, it's similar to the one, or would be similar to the one that runs from the Pringle Park Post Office underneath Liberty Street so you can get to City Hall. And in past discussions with Director Rutherford, she's indicated that funds for that would have to come out of the South Riverfront Urban Renewal District, which has not yet accrued enough funds to pay for that. And I also understand that at some point, you have asked Public Works to see if they can come up with some rough construction estimate of what it would cost. So I've got that question to Public Works, do we have that? And then secondly, I wanna emphasize again, and I'll be doing this again, that that project, at least in my view, is very high priority once we have the appropriate funding from the appropriate urban renewal district.
So I will answer this one instead of Director Fernandez. I was able, after our conversation earlier today, to follow up, and a cost estimate has been prepared. It's about 850,000 dollars to do that suspended bridge.
Which in general parlance is pretty much peanuts when we're looking at the projects for the police station and everything else.
Yes, in comparison, not so much. However, that it is in a different urban renewal area. It's in the South Waterfront Urban Renewal Area. That one is a newer urban renewal area. While it's had new development, that development is, is in a property tax exemption because it's multifamily housing. We still have a few years left on that exemption. When that exemption goes away, our revenues will start to increase much more rapidly. And, you know, so I think we're still gonna be a few years away before we have enough revenue to be able to fund that project.
I, I can live with the few years away as long as the commitment is it's going to be done once we have the funds available. And I see both directors sitting over there nodding their heads, yes.
Mayor, if I may, it's, it's a great idea to make that connection because it's private property. On that south side, it's private property to, to the west. The first part is we have to do the demolition. Without the demolition, we couldn't hang the bridge because then the flooding would hit it. That project will be starting within the next few weeks. And then once we demo out all that slab and that reservoir that's in there and reset the bank, then we are really prepared to be able to do the walkway on the north side and the bridge that connects it from the south to the north. You know, the, the hanging bridge, I think that's, that's the exact term to, to use. So, so it's, it's coming.
Perfect, thank you.
Alan, if you can't hear it, there's a cheer going up out there from sitter councilors who've sat in these chairs for the past 15 years working on this project. It's really a pleasure to have it in front of us, so thank you very much. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. I don't see any further business, so there have been renewal agencies adjourned. Call this meeting of the Salem City Council from July 8th to order. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Kizer?
Present.
Counselor Anderson?
Present.
Counselor Nankis absent. Counselor Leung?
Here.
Counselor Osik?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Cook?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
And Mayor Bennett?
Here. Any additions or deletions?
No.
Okay. Any comments from counsel? Erz?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to take the opportunity to invite everybody to Ward 6, specifically McKay Park, this Thursday at 11:00 a.m. for the groundbreaking of the new playground equipment. I look forward to that. This has been a great partnership with the Salem Parks Foundation and the staff and, and the residents of Ward 6, and I'm really excited to see this come to fruition today this Thursday at 11:00 a.m.
That's really great news, Counselor, that is. Any other announcing? Yes, Counselor Cook?
I just wanted to thank the people in Ward 7 that made it out to the Summer Solstice Stroll out on the 21st this past June. We had a great walk to Sunny Slope Community Garden and also to Sunny Slope Neighborhood Park, where there's a Parks and Rec class this week happening. And also wanted to thank city staff for the wonderful Parks and Recs programming that's happening right now.
Right. Anyone else? Very good, thank you. I've got a proclamation I wanted to invite up. I'm not sure, are there any members of state legislature from our delegation here or representatives?
Senator Bowles, I have no idea who it would be.
Come on up to him, I'll let you stand in. This is not Senator Bowles.
Yeah, this is not him.
Anyone else? Okay. Whereas the city of Salem is committed to providing clean, safe, and reliable drinking water. I just didn't want you to think the meeting was gonna go by without talking about drinking water in this town.
Sir Eric Lewis?
Yeah, I guess I do need one, don't I? Yeah, I'll try this again. Whereas the city of Salem is committed to providing clean, safe, and reliable drinking water to its 195,000 customers, which includes residents of Salem, Turner, and East Salem, the East Salem Suburban Water District. And whereas the city has also committed to serving our industrial customers who use Salem's water and producing food, beer, and wine that is sold nationally and internationally, and the critical medical facilities serving this region. And whereas in the summer of 2018, changes in the quality of river water created challenges for the city's water treatment facility. And whereas the city is taking proactive steps to safeguard its drinking water by improving facilities today and building a new state-of-the-art treatment system for clean and safe drinking water well into the future. And whereas the city has identified 72 million dollars in projects to address cyanotoxins and other natural and man-made hazards to the water system. And whereas city officials asked, asked Oregon state lawmakers to invest in these public health improvements and demonstrate a commitment to ensure safe drinking water. And whereas on June 25th, 2019, the Oregon Legislature's Joint Capitol Construction Committee passed House Bill 5030, which included 20 million dollars to help support the city's drinking water system improvements. Now therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim July 8th as a day of special recognition of Salem's legislative delegation. Senate President Peter Courtney, the late Senator Jackie Winters, Senator Denise Bowles, Representative Brian Clem, Representative Paul Evans, and Representative Teresa Alonso Leon, and call upon the residents of Salem to recognize these state lawmakers and express gratitude for their efforts to ensure preeminent water quality in Salem for now and for future generations to come dated this 8th day of July. Really appreciate the work our delegation did for us. I'm gonna have you introduce yourself real quick.
My name's Janine Styes, and I'm staffer Denise Bowles, Senator Denise Bowles. I'm just really excited about this.
Really appreciate you coming down. And I want to particularly express my personal gratitude to Senate President Peter Courtney, who really led the effort in the legislature to assist us in gaining this funding, which will make a tremendous difference in keep Peter Fernandez the young man he is today. Not to think about the money. So thank you very much. Remind you, this is for issues. Do I have a public comment? And we'll do, we'll do all of those who've signed up for public comment tonight. I will remind you that you have three minutes. At two minutes, the light turns orange. At three minutes, it turns red, which means stop. It's like red lights anywhere. It just means stop. So I will, it's always easier if you decide to rather than have me do it. I don't like playing traffic cop at any time. And please introduce yourself in the ward or your address. Kathleen's followed by Ryan Gale and Philip Wolf.
My name's Catherine Daniels. I live in Ward 2. First, I'd like to thank you for appointing me to the library advisory board, where I intend to be a constructive member. As there has been no meeting yet since my appointment, tonight I speak for myself. You have before you the May tracking report, yet that report tells us only that the number of books discarded and added in that month was about the same. Yet for the last six years, right up until May, roughly twice as many books have been discarded as added on average in each month. And if the big weed is not stopped, that practice will immediately restart. There's nothing in the library's collection development policy that alludes to or allows the big weed. To the contrary, the big weed flies in the face of the library's own stated policy to follow the crew manuals and guidance. The public has provided you with abundant and incontrovertible evidence of the ongoing decimation of the library's book collection, a net loss of 24% over the last six years. I worked in the public sector as a land use planner all my career, and staffed and attended countless public hearings. In my experience, when 10 or 20 people in a community the size of Salem voiced concerns about a particular issue, their voices were heard and changes were often made. When I testified at a January lab meeting and asked those attended, attending who opposed the big weed to stand, fully 70 people stood in opposition. Large numbers of people have similarly testified before you. This is a remarkable reflection of public sentiment that deserves to be heard and responded to in a meaningful way. This has not yet happened. Under Oregon's land use laws, cities are required to plan for 20 years of future growth and development. Salem is likely to have more than 30,000 new residents within 20 years, not to mention that Kaiser, Turner, and Almsville's populations, which will also grow, are largely dependent on our library, yet are not included in its already low per capita book rate. Planning for future population growth is the basis for the expanded police center and the planned expansion of other public services and utilities. It doesn't make sense that our book collection should be shrinking while other public services grow. I ask you to stop the big weed now and direct the library to endeavor to grow and maintain a book collection at the Oregon average of two books per capita going forward. A motion to end the big weed would be a motion to support our library in the most meaningful way possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Counselor Kizer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Daniels. I just wanted to get clarification about your statement you first made. It seems that, are you saying that May was an abnormality in the reporting?
Yes.
Okay. And then are you suggesting that things were changed to influence that May reporting?
I'm suggesting that the discard rate was slowed down.
Are you suggesting that's on purpose?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Lewis?
Just a quick question. There appears to have been a great deal of effort put into the designing There appears to have been a great deal of effort put into the designing and preparation for the new library. And for me, maybe I'm making it too simple. If we're going to have more books, what aren't we going to have? So what would you remove to add the, or to keep the books or to add additional books? What would you remove?
Some of the meeting room space downstairs that is proposed to be expanded.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I think that's, I think that's it. Basically, three, basically, all the adult books are planned to be crammed onto the main floor, which is already going to have expanded computer space. And that means that a great many additional books are going to have to be eliminated, especially if the shelves are going to be shorter. So I would say downstairs would be additional, an additional place to put some of those books. Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Hi. Because of the language translation and the use of an interpreter, I'd like to request an extra minute of my time, and if I could make that request for all the deaf people in the audience today.
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Again, my name is Ryan Gale, and I am a resident here in the City of Salem, and I'm an advocate on behalf of the deaf community. I'm here today in support of changing Chapter 97 and to amend this ordinance. It's a closed captioning policy, and it's to enforce closed captioning in public places. First, I want to say thank you so much to the congressmen here, to making this possible. I appreciate that. And the policy that we're trying to get passed here is crucially important for the deaf and hard-of-hearing public here in Salem. It would increase their enrichment of life and improve the quality of life here in Salem. This bill would be a cost of nothing to anybody. Also, it wouldn't be that much work to change to do the work. Simply just press the option on the menu or the closed caption button on a remote, and it's there. Most places here in the City of Salem already have closed captioning on their televisions. And I would say, so I would say it's done great with the bill. There's several places where I've gone into where we've had to ask if you wouldn't mind turning it on. Usually, it takes time to find a manager, that type of thing, for them to turn on. So we end up missing a lot of the information that's being presented there on the TV. We've only encountered maybe one or two places, public places, that have pretty much refused to put on the closed captions. They don't want to block something on the screen, and I don't really care for that because then that limits my access to what's going on. So we want to encourage you guys to pass this bill, and we want to catch up with other cities that have done so with advancing accessibility for deaf persons. The most recent city to pass this was in Seattle, Washington. They passed this bill there. Portland's got this same bill that's in act right now. And what this means for this bill is that our standard of living will then be equal to those of hearing residences here in Salem. We've struggled for years being a people of oppressed community, and we just don't care to do that anymore. So thank you so much for your time. I appreciate that.
Hi, good evening. My name is Philip J. Wolf. Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening to you all. Thank you. I'm from Portland, Oregon. I'm a resident in Portland. I'm a proud Portlander for years. And yes, I am deaf. I want to make sure that's clear here. And I am again requesting a minute of time due to the use of the interpreter and translation. I want to just kind of speak about some of my experiences with this. I've been a pioneer in passing this ordinance in Portland with closed captioning in public places, if you would just allow me to find my place here. Back on, it was June 26, 2015, I had put in some lot of work lobbying to get this ordinance passed in the City of Portland. We went through town hall discussions, kind of gathering the feedback from the community to see if Portland was really ready to advance rights and put closed captioning on all TVs and all public places. This includes restaurants, bars, airports, the DMV, Social Security Office, hospitals, everywhere in the City of Portland. And that passed. Lately, I've been doing some work, doing some research to see who is in compliance with that. 80% of the places I've visited have been in compliance. The 20% that have not are places, when I say have not, they don't have closed captions on their TV. I've asked why, I've inquired why, and some of the excuses we've gotten say, "Well, we don't put them on," or "There's no background to the closed captioning, so it's very difficult to see the closed captioning." So for example, when I'm a little bit far from the TV, if there's no background behind the actual text, it's very difficult to read. And it's just simply, some of the places just say, "Oh, well, we just have to turn it on. That's what the ordinance says. We don't have to worry about any of the fonts, the technology, the background coloring, any of that. All the ordinance says is that we just have to turn it on." I understand that. But like I said, 80% of public places that I've visited are in compliance. So it seems like the majority of public places are very open-minded and receptive to this. And I do want to emphasize that captions aren't just for deaf individuals. If you think about it, they're really for everybody in this room. If you're in an environment that's pretty loud, it may be difficult to hear what's being said on a TV, and you've got that accessibility provided just by reading the captions. Some of our older residents, sometimes it's difficult for them to hear in certain settings, and so that's great for them. Some of our residents have English as a second language, so it's great for them to be able to both maybe hear it and be able to read the English text. So again, I want to advocate and second Ryan's proposal, and again, I'm open for any questions. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Mayor Bennett, Councilors, my name is Chain Griggs. I live at 260 Washington Street South. I'm in Counselor Cook's Ward, and I'm currently serving as President of Salem Planning Commission. As you know, the Planning Commission serves in an advisory capacity to you on decisions that may impact the growth and orderly development of Salem. Salem Revised Code Six, Chapter Six is our guiding tool. One of our responsibilities is to report to City Council on the activity of the commission during the past year and present those findings in the annual report, which you have received. From that report, I would like to note that we have received 15 land use applications, including comprehensive plan changes, zone changes, design reviews, and appeals. In addition, the commission made recommendations on two code amendments to the City Council, including the State Street Corridor Project Plan and the West Salem Code Project, the cleanup project. Rather than going line by line through the report, I thought I would, instead, I would offer some trends that I've noticed. There have been more adjustments to deviate from the design standards, such as the location of paths, windows, driveways, and also adjustment requests relating to setbacks. We've seen that especially with the multi-family housing projects. We've also seen multiple requests for zone changes to industrial commercial. Although the bulk of our time is spent reviewing land use applications, we've also received some great training from staff to ensure that we're all playing from the same sheet of music. For example, we have training on the requirements for an analysis under the transportation planning rule and when a traffic impact analysis is required. We also asked for a presentation on the city's system development charges, an update of the Winter Maple Corridor, the Greenway implementation, the first phase of our Salem, and the draft greenhouse gas inventory. And last but not least, we covered ethics and ex parte rules. We anticipate that we'll continue to be busy in the months to come with land use applications, continued work on our Salem, and updating the multifamily design requirements, and also implementing House Bill 2001, which addresses that missing middle housing. And in conclusion, I would like to recognize city staff, both from Planning Division and Public Works, for their excellent work in supporting the commission. They're very responsive to our litany of questions prior to and during meetings, so public recognition is the least I could do. Thank you for your time, and I'd be glad to answer any of your questions.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you very much, Chair Griggs, for your service, and please extend those thanks to the other members of the Planning Commission. We appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Chair Griggs, for coming down today. I did have a question in regards to our Salem and the work that the Planning Commission's been doing. It's been apparent in the community meetings that there are some shifts that are taking place, like you referred to the code overhaul in West Salem. And you also mentioned, soon to come, the multifamily updating. Can you share with us how the Planning Commission, the lens that you're taking, the current projects, viewing the future changes that will be in place?
For example, on that last one, the multifamily housing, we're seeing more unique requests, unique in that there are not a lot of buildable lots in Salem that are perfectly flat, you know, and meet all the different standards that we have in place. Some of these requests that are coming in front of us are smaller projects, and they do require some consideration for tweaking setbacks, driveways, things that maybe a triangular lot would not accommodate in a typical project. We have Commissioner Swickert and Commissioner Levin serving on the our Salem, and they're carrying forward a lot of our concerns, and they're great representatives for that work. You're welcome.
Any further questions? Well, thank you very much, Chain. Really appreciate the work you guys are doing.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to address the Salem City Council. My name is Elaine Hirsch. I'm visiting you from Portland, and I am the Vice President, President-elect of the Oregon Library Association. I want to reiterate past comments that you've heard, that the Oregon Library Association continues to support Salem Public Library's Library Advisory Board-recommended collection development and management policies. Thriving libraries are constantly evolving their services and resources to best meet the current needs of their local populations. While the Salem community continues to grow and become more diverse, designing services and building collections that meet the needs and interests of an evolving and contemporary population is paramount. It is a sign of an innovative library system striving to meet its community's needs. The Oregon Library Association supports Director Sarah Straw, the library staff, and the Salem Public Library Advisory Board, and commends them for their ongoing initiatives to provide modern public library services for the Salem community.
Thank you very much, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hirsch, for coming down. A couple of questions. The Oregon Library Association, is that heads of libraries of all cities in Oregon? Or what is your organization, of what is it comprised?
Yes, it's a professional library association for the state of Oregon, and it's an affiliate, a chapter of the American Library Association, which is a national professional organization.
One of the, thank you. One of the concerns that has been expressed by folks who aren't in favor of the current collection development policies is that a very large number of books, there's been a very high percentage of reduction in the number of books in the collection. I may be wrong in this, but I think at least one contention is 23% of the books over a certain period of time. I'm wondering if you could just comment on to, into that issue, generally, do libraries reduce their collections? Do they increase their collections? Just some comments on that.
I think that this is a concern that's being grappled with nationally. I mean, I know it's very close to the heart here in Salem, but this is something that's happening in communities around the country. I think that in modern libraries, collection size is not as, is not as much of an indicator of the value or the performance of the public library as is, I would say, circulation rates of those materials. Are these books that are on the shelves actually being used by your population? I also think that as libraries are evolving, event space is very important. It's a community gathering space for your, for your city here, and I think that programming is becoming more and more increasingly important. So I am not as tied to the metric of collection size, especially for a community public library when you do have resources available through your consortium and through your cooperative system, and also from the university and college libraries that have a mission to be scholarly research centers for the state of Oregon.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. We've got quite a large report that I believe is called the Collection Maintenance Tracking Report from May, which goes through, I don't know, dozens of pages of individual books and gives an example of each one. Was it retained? Was it not retained? How it was dealt with by the library staff. Have you had a chance to review that?
I'm sorry if not.
Okay. Thank you. Then I guess you don't have to answer any questions.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you. I just have a few questions, Ms. Hirsch. Why did you come down today? Were you asked to come down, or did you hear about this case just in the scuttlebutt?
Well, as a board member of the Oregon Library Association, certainly this is an issue that we're aware of and that we want to support Sarah Straw and her library staff and make sure that the community of Salem has the best public library possible.
So she's a member of the organization then as new library administrator?
Yes.
Okay. And then also, you're speaking about the collection policy itself and the policies within CREU and the Oregon Library Association policies that are being followed. My question to you is, is there any best practice as far as the process when doing these things or the guidance? So if, you know, we have had within the last five years, collection review, there are processes that were in place before. My concern and my question to you is, is it just, we have to go this one way, and that's the process, and there's no guidance with public engagement? There's no guidance with the speed or the method in which you choose to do that? That's all left up to each individual member or library? Understanding your role as this organization, I understand that it's, you are supportive of this policy, but I'm wanting to dig further in looking at the actual guidance that your organization has. And if that policy is not in keeping with the community, when we have assets within the community that value the library, how that can be, how that can be put to align rather than be in conflict? I want to see a situation or an outcome where people are supportive of the things that you're talking about. How do we get there? Do we just say, "This is the way it's going to be," and people say, "Don't," and then you say, "Here are my credentials," and then we're doing it? And I understand this is really up to us as a city, but you just said before you started your testimony, this is a contentious issue in libraries across the state. So I'm wondering if you have any process guidance there?
As a librarian, to me, I think the most important thing I would look at is the circulation rates of these materials. You do not want to have books on the shelf that are not being circulated to the community. So that would be a key indicator to me.
So just as a, as an advocacy role, I would say remembering the number of days a week and the number of hours that a library is open can certainly affect circulation rates. And is that taken into consideration in this case?
I would say yes. If you have a book on the shelf that hasn't been checked out in five years, even if it is from the literary canon, you, your patrons, your community members can still have access to that material for free through inner library loan. We will borrow it from another library and provide it to you. So why don't we try and get a book on the shelf that is actually going to resonate with your population and that it will be checked out and it will be used?
And what about library circulation material that doesn't get checked out, per se? Things like our sheet music, things that get photocopied and are in reference materials, but because of the nature of the material, people access them, but they don't check them out? I just, I'm looking, you know, as a librarian, whenever you're collecting data, data doesn't lie, but as they say, you know, a liar sure can figure. You can make data say a lot of different things, and I think it's important to look at the context. And as far as programming as well, I just And as far as programming as well, I just want to point out Salem Public Library with programming absolutely sings. We beat the pants off Portland for half of the funding.
Counselor, I'd really like you to get to questions.
Little bit of staff.
You're debating an issue that has not been presented to the council.
I'm sorry, it's very passionate. Thank you Mr. Mayor, I will, I will dedicate it to a question. Thank you for your focus, yes sir. So my concern is in framing this issue, my question to you is, are you really looking at the heart of the library and making this recommendation? Are you really looking at Salem as a unique place?
As, as the incoming president of the Oregon Library Association, I have tremendous passion for libraries and for the communities they serve and I stand behind what I've said and what the Oregon Library Association believes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Good evening Mayor and City Council members. My name is Jane Cummins Fidler, I live in Ward Four. That may be a hard act to follow because I'm going to have to toss out a lot of my remarks and respond to part of it. I am here because I truly believe that the City Council plays a major role in making sure that the city's public library serves everyone in the community, stays up to date. And particularly, this is at a time when there's going to be a major renovation. And listening to the problems of construction cost earlier, you have a big job ahead of you because of the library bond being passed long before the renovation begins. So the reason I'm here is that I find, looking at some of the grading of Salem's public library compared to other major libraries in the state, most of our grades fall in the Ds and the Fs. That is a dismal record. And part of that, but tonight I'm going to speak about the collection, particularly because of the comments that were just made. A lot of us recognize that there are a lot of changes that need to be made in libraries, particularly because of the technology. It keeps changing and we need to stay up. However, I believe we are really getting rid of too many books. And I do not believe, in fact I am sure, having been told why some of the books are being pulled, that we are not following the cruel standards. The CREW is a weeding manual for modern libraries. And I'll start with a quote from that manual. "A good library collection is like a good haircut. It's not what you cut, it's what you leave." So we are pulling lots of books. And you just heard that the primary decision should be on circulation. Circulation is only one factor. We have been told over and over, pull the books from one to three years, when actually we should be pulling them not before five years. There are books, these books are investment by the community. We pay for those books and we expect to use them in various ways, not just to be part of the circulation, but certainly we are. Checking out is one thing. There's also research and browsing. We enjoy browsing to satisfy a new interest. We gather books to research a subject. We look at large art books and travel books, many of them having been pulled. They're easily used in the library, but not necessarily easy to check out or carry home. So I urge you all to look at what other major libraries in Oregon have as far as their grades are concerned and ask yourselves, do we want that kind of library in Oregon's capital and the largest library in the region? Thank you.
Thank you Jane, any questions? Okay, thank you. Followed by Brian Peet.
Hello, I'm Nicole Anglin. I reside in Ward Eight and I'm here in support of the captioning bill.
Can you lean closer to your mic?
Sorry. There are 200,000 deaf, hard of hearing or late deafened adults here in Oregon, according to the recent census. And, you know, I am hard of hearing, so I'm part of that group. And when I go places, I rely on the captioning to understand what's going on and participate. If there's background noise or other people are talking, then I miss all of that information. And I know a lot of other people do too. So I really hope that you guys take the captioning bill seriously and, you know, that it passes. Also, it doesn't cost any additional money to anyone and it is really easy to do, as Ryan had already said. So I hope you guys take that into consideration and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Peet, followed by Eleanor Berry.
Hello, good evening everybody. I'm a professor at Wu, Western Oregon University, and also here in Salem for Salem Community College, Works for Macatee Community College. And been there for the last year. And I teach ASL to students there. And the reason why I do that is because these students are very interested in being involved in the community here in Salem. And so it's important that these students are introduced or exposed to the deaf culture and the community of the deaf people here. It's important that they realize that deaf people want to be involved. We want to be engaged in what's going on here in our city. We want to be like our hearing friends. Deaf people have hearing families, have hearing spouses, and we want that access. For examples, when, for example, when it comes to political campaigns and rallies and a lot of that isn't closed captioned. And so I think it's great that we try to get this passed and I think it would help bring about unity in the community. Thank you. Any questions?
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Eleanor Berry, I hope I'm saying that right? Yep. Followed by Jim Shepke.
Thank you Mayor Bennett and Counselors for the opportunity to speak to you again. My name is Eleanor Berry, I live in rural eastern Marion County. And I'm here because residents in the rural areas around Salem should be able to rely on the Salem Public Library for resources that small-town libraries cannot be expected to supply. This August, it will be 25 years since my husband and I moved from Wisconsin to our present home. When we were investigating what our new home territory had to offer, of course, we looked at the holdings of the Salem Public Library in the subject areas of our main interest, poetry and astronomy. We were both impressed. Exploring the shelves of the 800s and the 500s gave us a positive impression of the cultural resources of our new home community. Over the next few years, I spent a good deal of time in the poetry shelves, learning about the poetry of Oregon and the Pacific Northwest. But newer rivals in Salem this year would get a far less positive impression of the capital city's public library. Those who have been visiting the library over the past two and a half decades have been witness to its decline. The Collection Maintenance Report for the month of May 2019 is not an accurate reflection of what has happened to the book collection over the past several years, let alone during last October and November before the Big Weed was suspended. The net gain of 2,061 items reported for this May is a striking departure from the quite steady downward trend over the past six years, which has reduced the book collection from over 348,600 to less than 266,300. It is alas not true that collection maintenance has been used over this period to provide shelf space for the constant arrival of new materials. The tracking report for this May provides no grounds for resumption of the aggressive weeding that was begun last fall. On the contrary, it suggests how the book collection might be maintained and built back up into one befitting the public library of Oregon's capital city. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Shepke. Followed by Tom Hoffert.
Thank you Mayor and City Council. Jim Shepke, Ward Two. I sent written testimony on the issue of the Big Weed to the City Council a week ago and it's, it was nine pages long, but I tried to put everything into it. So I hope you all got a chance to read that and I hope some of you may have questions about it. And I won't repeat it here. What I want to reflect on for a minute is that it was two years ago, right about now, that I led the campaign to pass the $18.6 million bond election for the library. And we had a very successful campaign. Our slogan was Renew Our Library. And our literature showed lots of books on shelves being enjoyed by patrons of the library. And that election passed with a 61% majority two years ago in November and we are very proud of that. So I wanted to bring that up and I wanted to remind you that our slogan was Renew Our Library. It was not Reduce Our Library. Because that's what we're talking about with the Big Weed, a reduction of our library. And I would say to you that the people that voted for that bond measure are going to be very disappointed when they walk into the new library if they see that it has thousands and thousands of fewer books. I think that ours is not a minority opinion here. In fact, I'd like everybody to raise your hand who wants the Big Weed to stop tonight. And we've been coming to, to all these meetings, we're hoping this is the last one. But this is not a minority opinion. Another thing you should recall is that three neighborhood associations have unanimously come out against the Big Weed in three different parts of town. And it was unanimous. So that gives you an indication of what the public really thinks about this. We do not want to see thousands and thousands and thousands more books removed from the library. It is not micromanagement for you to end the Big Weed. For one thing, you have a responsibility, a fiduciary responsibility. We're talking about as much as a quarter million dollars of books that may be removed in the coming months if you do not act tonight to stop the Big Weed. Please do that, thank you.
Thank you Jim, any questions? Counselor Anderson.
Thanks for coming down Mr. Shepke and for your community involvement. Have you had a chance to review what I asked Librarian Hirsch about, that is the Collection Maintenance Tracking Report and dozens of pages?
Yes, I have.
And I'm sure the council has read all of it. I have to convince, I confess, I didn't read all of it, I read enough to give myself an idea of what, what was going on. I'm just curious as to you could, if you could make some general comments as to the fact that the library staff goes through and says, here are all the books we took out and here are why we took them out. I'm wondering if you could comment to that generally and specifically if you want to on certain books?
Well, you know, I would like to concur with the previous testimony that this May month was totally atypical of what's happened in our library in the last six years. Because if you read the tracking study, it shows that about as many adult nonfiction books were added as were removed. And that's fine. That is in accordance with the CREW manual, that our collection development policy says we should be following. So May was, was fine. We have no problem with what happened in May. But it is not what happened last October and November. In October and November, twice as many books were removed as were added. So the May study, you know, I don't, it doesn't prove anything. Because if the Big Weed resumes and we go back to the way it was in October and November with aggressive removal of books, it's going to be different. So I just don't, I don't think it's relevant to the discussion we're having. And I'd also like to make one comment about what Ms. Hirsch testified to. She said the most important metric for a public library is circulation. Well, I would point out that on page seven of my testimony, it shows that our Salem Public Library has the lowest circulation per capita of any major library in the state. And I'll tell you, it's not because we have too many books. We have funding problems, we have staffing problems, we have a lot of problems, but having too many books is not one of the problems.
Okay, any further questions? Thank you very much. Thank you for the testimony, by the way. It really, it was nine pages worth reading, thank you.
Good evening Mayor Bennett and Counselors, thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Tom Hoffert, I reside in Ward One. And the nonprofit I represent, our Salem Area Chamber of Commerce also is in Ward One. I'd like to address item 3.3G in your agenda this evening and please pass on that on behalf of the over 1,100 small businesses that we represent in the Salem area, we'd like you to consider making sure that funding mechanisms of this dollar amount and effect on the population and businesses in the city would be referred to the voters at a very, hopefully, primary election or a general election, so we can maximize the most amount of impact by the number of voters who would be looking at these funding mechanisms.
Yes Counselor.
I had a question. In representing the Chamber of Commerce, how would your business or representative organizations be impacted if those services were to receive a year of gap? Were to have a gap funding of a year? If police, fire, city staff were to have that gap?
We have not been presented what that, to my knowledge, have not been presented with what that gap would be. Have you seen that information?
So I would recommend looking at the Revenue Task Force information that was put out. Essentially, it's my understanding from the staff reports that if we have a referral, because that creates a delay with time, there will be a funding area where we will not be able to continue at current levels. There will be a drop. We don't know necessarily what that drop would be, but those things were all discussed in the meeting. So I just want to make sure that we're looking at the same situation. Of course, we want to make sure that there's fiscal responsibility and that this is something that we're going into with full understanding. But it's my understanding in talking with business owners as well, there would be a severe impact if, you know, police, fire, city services, code enforcement, if we do not have the capacity to be able to meet demand.
Yeah, when we are not in disagreement that there would be a pain in the mechanic itself. So the mechanic requiring it to go to voters certainly pushes back the activation of the dollars into potentially the city's budget. That mechanism is one of the tough challenges when you get into a budget situation that you now find yourself in as we find ourselves as a citizenry with the, with the city. As we looked at the long-term planning, and there's certainly many things that contribute to this, but the service levels that we're talking about are largely driven by the need for certain staff amounts of allocation. This isn't just in buildings and the like, but in our staffing of how we make sure a city is ready to be appropriately servicing the citizenry. So if you look at how that year off potentially, or whatever of those mechanisms, what it does is put it ultimately back on the voters to make that tough decision. So if you're asking how the business community would feel about that gap, there is certainly a gap there, but we have not been told what specifically would occur in that gap other than that there would be a decrease in services, for instance, longer response time for city, fire and police and potentially things like that. So we'd like to quantifiably know what that is. I'd further say, this Chamber of Commerce would like to be active and a participant in these type of conversations in the future. We did not have a place at the table in the task force. It was represented by SEDCor as well as Home Builders Association. The Salem Chamber would be The Salem Chamber would be like to ask that the City Council would consider inviting us into the process in the future. I'm six months into this career after 15 years in the private sector, but I can assure you, our Board of Directors would be open at all times to be participatory in these processes.
That's great to hear. I just have one follow-up. Thank you. So I just want to confirm, coming from the business aspect, you encourage businesses to run a deficit when they're working to be able to serve populations or be able to administer their products or services?
The Chamber of Commerce wouldn't play a role in encouraging businesses to run. That is why businesses are in for-profit sector. But I think as we look holistically at a government, we need to provide our citizenry minimum services, but when we get into times like this, if we haven't prepared properly to then put this kind of onus on the citizenry and businesses without allowing them to have a voice in this process, I find some faults in that, yes.
But you do think that business is part of the solution with this and wants to be engaged and part of the solution?
I would say always that business wants to be part of a solution and at the table. When you have not had the representation or the invite to be there as an organization, there's a little disconnect, but we're jumping in feet first right now and happy to serve.
Were you invited tonight?
Was I invited tonight? No, I just had a conversation with our mayor, and I said, hey, this looks like something that we'd like to participate in.
Okay. Thank you.
I would invite any of those conversations to please email me, and know that we'll be here 100%.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just curious about your process. When you decide to take a position as an organization, do you pull your entire membership, or is it something that a board does or you as the executive director? I'm just curious. I don't know how it works.
Yeah, definitely not me from an executive director's standpoint, Counselor Hoy. We have a Board of Directors that is representative of our membership. Our membership elects that Board of Directors to serve on its behalf. So we have 23 directors that serve in a voluntary capacity, and they represent quite a diverse sector, both in size of business as well as our ethnicities and all the things that come together as a business community.
So you have a group of volunteers that are elected by the overall group in order to make policy decisions for your agency? Is that correct?
Well, we're not a policy decision body. We are lending our opinion on a policy decision you're considering, so we don't get to dictate your policy, sir.
No, I understand. But your policy being whether to endorse or oppose a particular thing before the city?
Yes, our Board of Directors makes the decision on what we endorse or would be against as a nonprofit.
Thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down, Mr. Hoffer. Are you speaking on behalf of the chamber?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the board, as Mr. Hoy discussed, has made a decision to ask that it be referred to the voters.
Our board has asked that any decision having to do with a funding source that would affect business would be considered by the voters of Oregon, pardon me, of Salem. So this board did not dissect the two measures that are in front of you, and we would like the opportunity to do that. One thing I would suggest to you is we need that information flow, sir, and part of the reason I'm here is to request that we can be activated into that discussion on a more regular basis.
So the decision that your board made was just to refer this matter to the voters, but your board has not yet made a decision as to whether they would support or oppose these particular measures?
That's correct. These two measures have not been individually weeded through on the board level.
Counselor Cook?
Just to reiterate, you are welcoming the discussion. You weren't invited, but you had a discussion tonight. But these are public meetings. I think we've gone and staff, council and staff, from my perspective, have gone to great lengths to make this a transparent process and to welcome not only public comment but involvement with system development charges, with revenue. Having this be a public process is really paramount. So it's kind of a sticky, a sticky wicket to keep coming back to this, we don't know, we're opposing this, but we don't know about this, but we would welcome more information. It's all here, and it's all available for anybody, not just you and not just the organization that you represent. So now I find myself wondering, how come you didn't look? I mean, I admire the passion to be able to come and have this testimony and make the decision, but I just wonder why you would be opposed without doing the research, why we're saying, we want this to go to voters, but we don't know how this would affect us for that gap year, were we to wait to be able to put it on the ballot while budgets are still cooking, while we're in a situation where we are with revenue? I'm just wondering.
Can I make one correction, Counselor Cook? We did not say we were in opposition to these two funding mechanisms. We asked that you put them to the voters, so that's a really important delineation there.
Okay. Any other? Thank you, Mr. Hoffer. Byron Kimball?
My name is Byron Kimball, and I reside in Ward 5. First of all, I'd like to thank the Honorable City Council for welcoming my remarks. I encourage the City Council to vote in favor of the proposed changes to Chapter 97, which will ensure equal public access to all Salem residents, regardless of hearing ability and/or gender identity. As a Salem resident, I experienced hearing issues and am a member of the LGBTQ community and chose Salem primarily for its previous record on human rights in the original Chapter 97 passed in 2002. However, Chapter 97 is intended to be a living document that would evolve with the needs and the needs of Salem's growing population, and by requiring captioning on public television sets and by updating discriminatory language, mentioned the previous Chapter 97, I hope the City Council can affirm Chapter 97's original mission and continue to encourage diverse, open inclusion for all Salem residents. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Byron. Any further questions? No further. Thank you very much. Ellen Stevens?
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Ellen Stevens. I am in Ward 2, and I, at the risk of being too redundant, I've scratched out a good part of my report, but I would like to have you know that as a longtime library user and supporter, I ask tonight that you vote to end the mass book removal project that began last fall. In December, several councilors expressed concerns about the project. By this time, more than 2,000 books, mostly from religion, philosophy, and poetry, had already been removed. One librarian who was assigned the work called it clearcutting. It would be devastating to have the project resume and to see other collections like history, biography, and art, which I care a lot about, to be clear-cut. This is what will happen if the council fails to take action tonight. I understand that our book collection has already been reduced by 24% in the past six years. During this period, an average of 10% of our collection has been weeded every year. That is twice what professional guidelines like the CREW manual call for. Today, we have one of the smallest book collections per capita of any major city in Oregon. Enough is enough. We want our book collection to grow and not continue to shrink. As Salem's population grows, we need more books to meet the demands of readers, not fewer. Please vote tonight to end the mass book removal project once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Katrina Rosenfeld?
Hi, thank you for letting me come and speak. I want to thank Kathy that works with the Chief of Police in a...
Could you speak up and give your name and address?
Oh, my name is Katerina Rosenfeld. I live actually in Independence. I'm an advocate here for my daughter, who is currently homeless in Salem. I'm here to speak about the discrimination that she has experienced and I have experienced from the Salem Police Department. I believe this discrimination against her is because of her disability, and so I'm really looking at this and trying to figure out what the police and the City Council in Salem is missing, because there must be something that you don't know that I know, and I'm soul-searching on this. So I thought I'd tell you a little bit about my daughter's disability. She was born ADHD, almost to the point of autism. Now, the upside of that is that she has a brilliant, brilliant mind. She's kind and very beautiful as well, but the downside is that communication is very difficult for her. She dealt with this through school. She was always a straight A student, an incredible ballerina and a violinist. And then, when she was nine, her brother almost died, and we needed a major surgery for him, so we moved into low-income housing in Corvallis. And the Lynn Bettina Housing Authority, a man named James A. Hackett, placed an illegally federally funded housing for nine of the most dangerous felons in Oregon around my daughter. Three of these guys were sexual predators. One of them actively stalked her for three years. She came out of that housing with a PTSD that was so severe that she was suicidal often. So she went to a counselor every, three times a week sometimes, and she began to recover. We began to eat organically. She went to college, and she was a straight A student through a pre-law program at Washington State. She was the assistant to the Vice Chancellor there, Carolyn Long, did her law research. Her PTSD would resurface every time she was under extreme stress. And when you have PTSD combined with ADHD, it mimics bipolar disorder. So sometimes she couldn't sleep for three to six days at all, and she had to be hospitalized at times. Recently, we were in Salem, and she was living in Salem with a man from another country. I didn't know that this was going on. I wouldn't hear from her very often. Often, when I went there, she wouldn't answer the door. Nobody would answer the door. Her phones disappeared.
Katrina, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Okay, the Salem Police have arrested her twice recently because of her disability.
Katrina, I'm going to have to, I really am going to have to cut you off for a minute. Counselors, do you have any questions? Okay. The thing I would suggest is, you've talked with my office before, make sure you get whatever your concerns are in writing and into the Police Review Board if you have concerns. We really don't go into these kinds of specific personnel matters. I really appreciate your situation. I appreciate you coming in to talk to us, so thank you very much.
Can I ask you one question?
Yes, you can.
Okay. My daughter's car was towed away from her last week and impounded at Affordable Towing. There's no way she can get it back. She bought it when she was 17.
We'll work with you on that. Would you talk with Gretchen Bennett from my office, and she'll help you out with this, okay?
Okay. And for you, for you, if somebody was having a heart attack on the ground, you wouldn't arrest them?
I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to cut you off.
Yeah.
Okay? David Wentz?
My name is Dave Wentz. I actually came here as a result of a notice from the Chamber of Commerce. I did not know about this meeting either until I told, I was told about it. I represent most of the veterans' population here in Salem. I am the chairman of the Salem American Veterans. I am the Veteran Service Officer for the VFW and for the Vietnam Veterans of America, and I sit on the State Council of the Salem American Veterans. I came in here to discuss really 3.3, that deals with the $10 residential utility that is going to be added on to the phone. My problem with that is that you do not, you are not specific insofar as how you're going to make exceptions. Normally, usually, the exceptions are, well, if you're on food stamps, then you get the exception. The problem is, particularly with the veteran population, number one, they're reluctant to enroll in programs of any kind of governmental agency. Quite often, the medical expenses that are associated with their problems and the problems of their children exceed what they could afford to pay. Just so you're aware, whenever we, the VA gives an increase, the increase is between 1% and 3% total. That doesn't come anywhere near enough to meet the living costs of Salem. So anyway, I ask that you submit this for more consideration specifically insofar as how you are going to exempt people from this $10 charge.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wentz. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Why don't we move then to the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar with the following poll. Item 3.3G polled by pretty much everybody.
Pulled by you?
Pulled by me.
Pulled by you. And then, did we have any others?
No.
Okay. Very good. Go ahead and...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 3.1A is the draft City Council minutes from June 24, 2019. Item 3.2A is the building and safety fund policy. Item 3.3A seeks approval to seek a grant for Minto Island Conservation Area Phase 3 restoration. Item 3.3B, memorandum of understanding between the City of Salem and the Willam River Keepers. Item 3.3C, purchase and sale agreement with Oak Ridge Properties Investments, LLC, and Filiberto Moreno for potential right-of-way extension of Millard Lane Southeast. Item 3.3D, grant agreement to accept Urban Renewal Agency funds for Pringle Creek North Block slab demolition. Item 3.3E, grant agreement to accept Urban Renewal Agency funds for Salem Police Station. Item 3.3F, grant agreement to accept Urban Renewal Agency funds for Division Street improvements. Skipping item 3.3G, and we go to 3.3H. It's an order for City Council review of the Planning Administrator's Decision Improving a Tentative Subdivision Review with Class 2 Adjustment Application for Permit Case Number SUBADJ19-03 for a property located at the 600 block of Millard Lane Southeast. Item 3.3I is the First Amendment to the Grant Agreement between the Housing Authority of the City of Salem and the City of Salem for Operation of the Homeless Rental Assistance Program. Item 3.3J, Portland General Electric Green Future Impact. Item 3.3K, recommendation for reappointment to the Salem Public Library Advisory Board. And that concludes the consent agenda.
All righty. Any comments, questions? I'd like to, just for a moment, have Wendy Valles from Portland General Electric come talk to us just for a minute about their Green Future, if you could. Just, I think this is a program that fits well with other issues we've been discussing, and I think it is part of a package of climate-related issues that we deal with, and so appreciate you being here, Wendy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. With me tonight is my colleague, Josh Halli from PGE. Our address is 121 Southwest Salmon Street, Portland, and I'm usually located at 4245 Cale Street Northeast here in Salem. So happy to talk about Green... I'm gonna actually hand it over to the expert on this. And Josh, do you want to talk a little bit about what is being proposed tonight, in addition to thanking Ryan Zink for working with us?
Absolutely. Thanks all for having me.
I'll have to get closer to that mic if you don't...
Sorry, my name's Josh. I'm Josh Halli. I'm a product manager at Portland General Electric. I work mostly on renewable energy products. So what you're all considering tonight is to approve moving forward with committing to a brand-new innovative product called Green Future Impact. It's essentially a green tariff that allows Salem to commit to purchase the output of a brand-new, not-yet-constructed renewable energy facility. It will be a solar facility located here in the state of Oregon. The proposal that you have in front of you is to purchase 55% of Salem's current electricity usage, and that's capital C, City Salem, your buildings and facilities, not the community. And so that would enable Salem to take its, the content of its electricity it consumes at its facilities up to 75% renewable, starting in 2021, which is when the facility will be complete with construction. And then, over time, as the content of our basic mix continues to increase in renewable content, you will end in 2035 at 100% renewable. So it puts you on a path to be 100% renewable, and not only 100% renewable, but supplied from a local Oregon-based facility. That's a unique and new opportunity that has not been available in the state of Oregon prior to the PUC passing the ability for us to offer that here in the state of Oregon. So we're thrilled to have you consider participating in this, along with a host of other cities that have voiced support for this product. And we are just really thrilled with the leadership that you've shown as a city, not only in considering this effort, but previously in supporting our Clean Wind Program. You've been a supporter of that since 2010. And currently, about 23% of your constituents that are PGE customers are participating in a voluntary product as well. So you'd be following the example set by your constituents in supporting renewable power here at the City of Salem.
Great, thank you very much.
I just want to also thank Mayor Bennett. You were critical in having this program come to life for us. You were one of a handful of mayors across our service territory who signed on to support the ability for us to offer this program with the PUC. So we also want to thank you for your support.
Thank you, it's very nice of you. Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm gonna second your motion so we can vote. All those in...
Ausick.
Did Ausick? You gotta get louder, Ausick. Sorry, okay, Matt seconded it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Have a public hearing.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing the Planning Commission's decision in case number CPCZC19-03. The criteria applicable to this appeal are SRC 64.025E2 and SRC 265.005. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. A failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue shall preclude appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by testimony from the following. The applicant's limited to 10 minutes. Neighborhood associations are limited to five minutes. Other interested parties are limited to three minutes. And the applicant's rebuttal is limited to five minutes.
Good evening. I'm Olivia Glance, Planner with the Community Development Department. I'll be presenting CPCZC1903 for property located at 5871 Liberty Road South. I'd like to enter the staff report with attachments in this presentation into the record. I'd also like to make a correction on page two of your staff report that the application was received on December 3, 2018. The applicant is requesting to change the comprehensive plan from developing residential to multifamily residential, and change the zoning designation to multifamily residential 2 or RM2. The RM2 zone would allow for 12 to 28 dwelling units per acre. The subject property is located on Liberty Road South, a major arterial between Davis Road South, a collector, and Mildred Lane South, a minor arterial. The recommended conditions of approval will provide access from six different streets, which will be shown later in the presentation. The aerial photo from 2019 shows that the existing dwelling on the subject property, townhomes, townhouses, lots located to the north, as well as 50 Oaks Plan Unit Development to the north, and new single-family subdivision to the south. Crossler Middle School is located at the intersection of Davis and Liberty. The subject property and properties to the south are designated developing residential, shown in light green. Properties to the north and west are designated multifamily residential, which is shown in orange. The zoning map paints a similar picture, with the subject property being zoned residential agriculture in the light green. Properties to the east and south have been subdivided and are zoned single-family residential, shown in yellow. The properties to the north and west are designated multifamily 1, which is the light orange, and multifamily 2, which is the dark orange. Some pictures of the subject site. This picture is taken from Liberty Road, looking towards the property. And then, looking northeast from Mildred Road South, towards the subject property, and you can see the Joinak Department, Townhomes in the distance. And we have some pictures of, on the left is 50 Oaks Plan Unit Development, which is duplexes, and then Joinak Street or the Townhouse subdivision on your right. And then you have two of the street, connecting streets, so you're looking north down Eagles Dance on your left, and south from Honeybee towards the subject property. The proposed designations are equally or better suited than the current designations because the property conforms to the Salem area comprehensive plan policies for multifamily housing, including close proximity to parks, schools, transit, and a budding land-zoned multifamily. In addition, the change will help meet the deficit identified in the 2015 Housing Needs Analysis, which has been accepted by City Council. So the recommended conditions of approval will provide access from existing sub-streets on Joinak, Eagles Dance, and Big Mountain. And then also, those future streets conditioned would be Honeybee to the multifamily to the north, Fire Cloud Street to the existing subdivision, or the proposed subdivision to the west, and then the unnamed street to the subject property to the north. In addition, conditions of approval require the applicant to install traffic signals at the intersections of Liberty and Mildred and Davis and Liberty. The subject property is within the Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association and across Liberty Street from South Gateway. The applicant had attended both Neighborhood Association meetings. Comments were submitted, and written comments were submitted from Sunny Slope Association, and they are included in your staff report and in the Planning Commission's findings. Staff recommends that you affirm the Planning Commission's decision for May 8, 2019. Have any questions?
Any questions? Well, not yet. We've got a couple of public folks to... Mr. Grins, are you representing the applicant? So you have 10 minutes, or less.
Would you like it to be less? Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Mark Grins, and I'm with Multitec Engineering. Our office is 1155 13th Street Southeast here in Salem, and we represent the applicant before you. We understand that this, that the council has brought this matter up after the Planning Commission approved it in order to allow the Neighborhood Association to discuss further its desire that this property be designated RM1 rather than RM2. The staff report does a good job of outlining this application. And as you noticed from Olivia's presentation of the number of public improvements that this property is being asked to construct and participate in, six street connections, which will involve at least five public streets through the site, as well as two traffic signals, one at Davis and Liberty and one at Mildred. Those are significant amounts of resources that would have to be put forth in order to have this project happen, to create more multifamily housing that's drastically needed for this community. You know that I've been before you on several projects over the course of the last few years in trying to find locations for multifamily housing projects to go. There's a significant demand still for multifamily. The vacancy rate in town is less than 3%. And so we're working hard to try to find places for those projects to go that are well-suited. The staff report points out that this property meets the criteria that's set out for a location for this. The maximum number of units that this project could have based on the zone code is 442, and the minimum is 190. Now, I can tell you that with all of the, with all of the public infrastructure that we have to build through this site, and the significant stormwater management facilities that'll have to go to support both the public and private infrastructure in here, that there's no way that we'll approach anywhere close to 442 units on this site. And in fact, we're projecting that will be right around 300 units at the most that we can fit on here. And we still have to configure our site to match up with these conditions once this thing is approved. We believe that it's going to take the maximum number of units that we can fit in here in order to be able to support the public improvements that we're proposing to do. The maximum number of units that this property could have in it if it was zoned RM1 would be 221 units, and that's significantly less than what we believe we can get on here under the RM2 zoning. Excuse me. We know the council, as well as the community, is working hard to try to create as many affordable housing units as possible. The way, the best way we can do that is to, one, make sure that we're using the properties that we can find that are well-suited for multifamily as efficiently as we possibly can. The other thing that would, that'll help overall in the future to help drive dwelling unit rental costs down is to continue to provide more and more units into the marketplace. So eventually, we will catch up with demand, and eventually, that will allow interest rates to stabilize and possibly interest rates to drop as we reach that. That will be what's necessary in order to achieve the long-term goal, which is more affordable housing for this community. And so that, again, that's why we believe that it's, that the maximum amount of density that you can get on the sites that we can find is going to be the best way to achieve that. We are struggling to find sites suitable for multifamily housing in this community. I mean, most of the projects that you've seen me here for with you have been ones where we're trying to make comp plan zone changes or work for conditional uses to put multifamily in places that aren't initially set up for that. And I think we're going to struggle more and more to find suitable sites for that that are not immediately in residential, single-family residential areas where there's more impact than this one will have. This site, because of its proximity to Liberty and Mildred, will take traffic, allow traffic to get out and away and not necessarily dwindle and dribble into residential areas. The traffic signal that will build at Mildred and Liberty will offer a good opportunity for traffic to move south, not north, get on Mildred, and be able to move clear over to Commercial Street without any difficulty, and for sure, Sunnyside Road without difficulty, and take traffic away from the impacts that it could have to the, on Liberty to the north. We don't, we didn't at the public hearing necessarily support staff's requirement for all the street connections, but we're willing to build all those. I think, I don't think we, you want traffic to go to Davis, but I think that overall, the Mildred connection and the traffic signal Mildred will help. We've been working with some other landowners in here to try to acquire, and are about to complete the negotiations to acquire right-of-way that would take from the Mildred from where it is now and allow it to connect to the Bell Crest subdivision, which gets us really close to having Mildred get all the way out to Skyline, which will then provide another avenue for traffic to move out of this area onto an arterial rather than Davis and out through that area that's congested because of the Crossler Middle School. So we think this is a good site. We think it's appropriate for the zoning that we've asked for in here. Staff supports that. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have of us.
Counselor Hoyt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for coming down and for your information. You've referenced several times affordable housing, and I just want to be clear, there's not, this isn't part, affordable housing isn't part of this project, is it?
Not in the sense that it's not, it's not part of, it's not like some of the projects that we've done, like the one that Mountain West did out on Portland Road where it's part of your urban renewal process and your Housing Authority project. That's not what this is, but it's affordable in the sense that it's more affordable than trying to buy into a house today. We are making good headways in this community for building more single-family residences, and there are some projects that are building single-family at the lower side of the market, but even so, that's still 300, you know, $290 to $300,000 for a house, and that's still going to be more expensive than rent would be for apartments.
So this'll be market rate rent?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Cutt?
So, in speaking to the connectivity for vehicular traffic, what about improvements for pedestrians? I know in some of the designs you've brought forward in the past, they've included pathways or access in certain areas. In this case, if you go back to the non-blown-up picture of the property, Seacor Park is across Davis Road. Were there any projects or improvements that staff requested for crossings, both on Davis or on Liberty? And then, when you said Sunnyside earlier, were you referring to Skyline?
So, the Sunnyside I was talking about, so you get on Mildred, and you can go east on Mildred, gets you all the way to, that gets traffic to Sunnyside into Commercial Street and takes, and allows people to move east.
So past Bryant Johnson Park?
Yeah. And then, we, the project will have pedestrian connections from the site directly out to Liberty, even though it won't have any street connections out to Liberty, but it'll have pedestrian connection there, and then we will be...
What do you mean by pedestrian connection? Flashing beacon or...
Walkway connections to Liberty, and then they'd be able to get to a crosswalk at the new signal we're going to build at Mildred and Liberty. Or they could use that walkway system to travel northward and get to Crossler School. But we're also connecting to Jarnack. We're going to have some kind of connection to Beehive, and then we'll be connecting to future streets that'll come from that white area that's going to go over to Redleaf, and then Redleaf down to Davis. And then, so there's a lot of pedestrian outlets that are going to be created here, but there weren't any requirements, at least at this stage, for the zone change for any additional pedestrian facilities to be constructed outside of those that will come with the public street improvements and the traffic signals that we're going to be doing.
And I know this has come up in the Neighborhood Association before, but as far as access for areas for people to go, places and things for people to do, the parks are the primary access since there's no business out in that area. Was the owner, was, when you were looking at the zone change, were you looking at doing things that would be zoned to have more opportunities for public connection?
I'm not sure exactly that I understand the question, because we'll be making frontage improvements on Liberty, we'll be making all those public street improvements, and those street improvements come with sidewalks, so I'm not really sure. I mean, there aren't a whole lot of other places that you can move people than we're going to move them. Because, like I said, we'll have walkway out to Liberty, we'll have walkways over towards to Mildred, we'll have walkways that connect to the public streets to all the, to the six different street connections we're going to be providing. I'm not sure where people want to go, that they... I'm not sure where people want to go that they won't have a walkway system to get there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Grins. Following up on Counselor Hoyt's question, did you and your clients consider providing any affordable housing? And I think the city has some incentives for that. Did that enter into your considerations at all?
At this stage, that has not been part of the consideration. We haven't moved to the actual land use.
So, it could potentially be part of that.
It is something that our client, given that there are incentives out there that our client could consider. But at least at this stage, what we would represent is it's a market rate.
All we're doing now is the zoning change. But I would encourage you to contact, and I'm looking at Lisa Anderson Ogilvy and Norman Wright, if you could contact them and see if there are some incentives for affordable housing. Because one of the things that is nice about this project, it's on Liberty Street. It's connected closely, maybe not directly, but very closely to the Salem-Kaiser Transit District. So, I think that's a good spot to fit housing. Two other questions. One, we've been here before about issues about trees and white oaks and other things. What's the status of the trees on that property? I couldn't really see anything.
There aren't hardly any trees on this site. This is a piece of property that's pretty much void of very many trees. It has a large house that sits further up, kind of on the high spot. It's a piece of property that years ago was part of a farming and orchard activity, and the orchard's long since been cleared off of it.
And finally, with respect to the RM2 zoning, the property immediately north, on the west end of the property, we're talking about that vacant property now, was also zoned RM2?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Young.
Thank you. Just one thing I just wanted to note, because you were emphasizing a lot on affordable housing being, and I understand that currently that you're looking at these places to be at the market rate. And I just want to echo what Counselor Anderson was specifically saying about working with both Kristin Rutherford and also Norm Wright on if that ends up being a possibility for some of those homes or some of those units to be considered for affordable housing. I mean, you're talking about increasing the number of supply, so the demand goes down, that would increase or decrease the amount of rent. But currently, if you look at some of the new builds that are happening, especially at market rate, you're looking at, let's say, a one-bedroom, starting around, at least $1,000 or up.
Yeah, so that helps make sure our client is sitting here listening to you, so he's hearing what you're suggesting. And I know that he's a developer in this town that has been supportive of all kinds of housing projects. So, I know that we will explore that option. But I think that what everybody needs to also keep focused on is that, yes, almost all the new projects that are coming in are market rate, are at the upper end of the rent schedule. But if we can put enough units into the system, those rents will stabilize and start to slide down. And as those rents slide down, so do rents in older units as you come down, and those are the ones that are at rental rates that are lower than the new market rates. And so, eventually, you provide a better rent system and rentability at costs that are less than they are today because we bring more units on the market. It's a trickle-down effect ultimately that happens, that if we can get enough units in there, and I know there's a lot of projects that have come online and more that are still coming, and I think we're going to get there. But the demand is so high right now that you've got to just find a way to get the most units in, and you can't put too many units in that don't generate the revenue for the amount of public improvements that, like this project's being asked, or others are being asked to do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Grins. Appreciate it. Sorry. Bill Armstrong.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name's Bill Armstrong. I live in Ward 4. I live at 5821 Liberty Road, a property directly north of the subject property here. I have a couple of concerns that, maybe I'm not the only one, but I live right next door to RM1 Development, the 50 Oaks on the corner of Liberty and Davis, and RM2 Development, which is Horton's Wind Dance Townhomes. And one of those developments, the RM1, the lower density, seems to have the parking pretty much under control. The RM2, on any given night, if you walk down the Karen Lynn Loop, you'll find several cars illegally parked, even though there's no parking signs on the east side of the road. So, my concern is, if we're going to put 300-plus apartments on the adjoining property to ours, I believe the code is one and a half parking spaces per unit. The average American owns 2.1 cars, I believe. Is there going to be 150 cars a night trying to park on Honeybee Street on our property? And on the Mildred Development Whispering Winds, are cars going to be, I can just imagine cars lined all the way up Big Mountain Avenue. I think this picture, to me, it seems a little bit leaving out part of the story, because where the white section is Fire Cloud Avenue, it looks like homes, but I think that's also been approved for RM2. So, I think there's going to be 200 apartments there. So, just again, concerns about where are we going to put all the cars? Also, the Housing Needs Analysis from 2015 is referred to, and that 207-acre number is kind of a ballpark. The real shortage is 2,900 multifamily units. And if you divide that by 14, which is RM1 maximum, you get 207 acres. But if you divide by RM2, you get 103 acres. So, people keep quoting the 207, but I think really 2,900 units would be a better figure to refer to, because we're not 207 acres short. That's sort of just a reference number. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Thank you. Evan White. Evan, are you representing the neighborhood group?
I am.
Okay. What's your get?
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and councilors. I'm Evan White, Land Use Chair of the Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association. We appreciate the opportunity to express our concerns about this project. Sunny Slope has always been very supportive of multifamily development, and we have a lot of it in our neighborhood. Representatives of the applicant have appeared at our meeting several times and built a very nice development off Skyline. There are already two other very large multifamily complexes to the north of the site, which you are considering tonight, both zoned RM2. When I drove through these with my wife, she said that an awful lot of people have been put into a very small space with very little parking, as Mr. Armstrong just noted. If you were to invite a few friends over for dinner, where could they possibly park? Immediately north is a 2.65-acre site owned by Mr. Armstrong that was recently zoned RM1, with the condition that no more than 28 units shall be permitted. The parcel under consideration tonight is about six times larger, and if the same standard were applied to it, the developer could construct 168 units. It would still be very large, but it would have less impact on our neighborhood. The RM2 zoning that has been requested would allow up to 443 units, and we can be sure that the developer would seek to ask for variances and other adjustments to build as many as he can, as Mrs. Griggs was kind of alluding to earlier this evening. As you know, city staff has been working on an update of the comprehensive plan. We are headed in the right direction in some areas and falling behind in others. We are falling behind in walk and transit friendliness, bicycle and pedestrian use, tree canopy, greenhouse gas emissions, and air pollution from travel. When you stand at Crossler Middle School and look south, you see five lonely fir trees at the entrance to one RM2 complex. Beyond that, it is roofs, roofs, and more roofs. We are doing poorly in the percentage of trips by bike and walking. We seem uncertain whether we want complete neighborhoods where people live within walking distance of parks, schools, grocery stores, and transit. From our community greenhouse gas inventory, we know that Salem already ranks among the biggest emitters of mobile emissions among major Oregon cities. We believe it makes no sense to cite such a massive development on the outer fringe of Salem. On page 12 of its decision, the planning commission found that the applicant's proposal would satisfy all the criteria needed for a zone change to RM1. On page 7, the proposed order finds that a density of 12 units per acre encourages efficient use of residential land and public facilities. We agree, and that is why we believe that this land should be zoned for RM1, which allows for up to 14 units per acre. RM1 zoning would also more than satisfy the density zone of General Development Policy Number 7, which calls for an average density of 6.5 units per acre. You may have seen the movie A Bridge Too Far with Sean Connery about an Allied parachute drop into Holland during World War II. It did not go well for the Allies. For this project, RM2 is a bridge too far. Unless the applicant amends his application to RM1, we respectfully ask that council deny the application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor, go ahead. Jim, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thanks for coming down. I just want to make sure the arithmetic that I'm working on is right. Your proposal is RM1 would be penciled out to a maximum of 224 units.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Excellent. Thank you, Evan. Staff? Any questions for staff? Yes, Counselor Hoyt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a couple of different references to the section in white, the lower left. Is that really going to be single housing, single family, or is that going to be multifamily?
So, that's currently what's approved, is what's overlaid on there, is that subdivision.
Thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Continuing west, is that property west the one we just approved last meeting? Property west on Mildred Lane, or do you know?
No, this is, so the one we looked at last meeting was near Sumner Elementary School, so it's closer to Sunnyside.
All we're doing tonight is approving a zoning change. We're not approving parking requirements, traffic studies, all that sort of thing. That would come when the developer submits a proposal. Is that the correct understanding?
Correct. We did have a TPR analysis as where the traffic conditions came from, but there'll be further reviews.
Right, right. So, the developer will come back and say, here's what we want to do, and then, the community development and the planning commission will say yes with conditions, or no, or yes with no conditions.
There'll be further land use reviews.
And so, it'll come back to the council at some point, potentially.
Potentially.
Okay. Then, I'm interested in the analysis that I think it was Mr. Armstrong talked about. You should look at not the acreage, but the number of units, and I'm suspecting that might be a bit above your pay grade. So, I'm wondering if somebody higher up in the food chain could answer that question.
Counselor Anderson, Lisa Anderson Ogilvy, planning administrator. I'm happy to answer that question for you. So, the Housing Needs Analysis looked at units and the equivalent acreage. And so, it's based on a comprehensive plan designation of property. So, it's not how many acres are RM1, how many are RM2. It's the comprehensive plan multifamily. And so, we had to average the units, the density that's being built across RM1 and RM2. And so, yes, some properties maybe will build higher density if they're RM2, and others will build lower. But what we found in our past permits is that no property was building to the max of RM2. It just really can't be achieved with the open space, the parking, the stormwater, the setbacks, et cetera. It's very difficult to get to the 28 dwelling units per acre that's allowed in RM2. So, an average between the RM1 and the RM2 was 18 units that were being built.
Thank you.
Counselor Lewis.
Lisa, if I could do a follow-up to that. This is a good time for me to catch up. 2015, we did the Housing Needs Analysis. What was the multifamily unit need at that time?
Well, we have a projected deficit of 207 acres, and the unit number, I believe Mr. Armstrong quoted it, I don't have it on the top of my head, I think it was about 2,000 acres, or 2,000 units, excuse me.
Okay, let's say 2,000. It's now four years later. How many have we completed?
We've converted 31 acres so far.
Any guess at how many units?
We've, between that time, we've issued permits for 1,600 units, but most of that's been going on land that was already zoned multifamily and was already accounted for. So, we have been building a lot of multifamily units, but it's going on land that we already assumed we're going to have multifamily. And so, a refresher on the Housing Needs Analysis, it looked out to 2035 and assumed that if we didn't add any more land to multifamily, then we were going to have a deficit of 207 acres in 2035. So, we're trying to make sure we don't get to that point by adding land over time.
Okay. Thanks.
Counselor Young, did you want to?
I have another question.
All right. I think he's done. That's my impression. Your turn.
He actually asked a question.
Oh, he did? Oh, okay. Did you get the answers you wanted?
I think so.
Okay. You can ask her twice. Applicant rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I know we're not at the land use part where we're talking about the standards, but I just wanted to make sure that council understands that this particular, the Harrison Industries Group strives to have projects that have parking ratios that are somewhere between 1.8 and 2 parking spaces per unit. So, they hold a lot of apartment projects in town, and they know what happens if you get below that. And in fact, most of the apartment clients that we have right now are striving for that 1.75, 1.78 minimum parking spaces, because like has been pointed out, it's just, it's too difficult to not have that type of a ratio in place there. We've been doing apartment projects for a very long time, and I can tell you that what staff has told you about the average for units per acre in the community is probably true. We were able to get about 22 units per acre in RM2 zoned property. That has fallen now closer to 20 units per acre primarily because of the extra requirements that we now have for the stormwater management facilities that we have for stormwater treatment. So, we're falling down on that. And I know that it's, that what Evan said about putting apartments on the fringes, but how many projects have I brought here that have resulted in apartments being located inside? being located inside the, the developed area? We've not been able to successfully do that, and council has made decisions that have deferred a lot of that, that opportunity and forced us to the fringes where, like this, we are predominantly adjacent to mostly multifamily or residential areas that have not yet developed to the extent that, that they become opponents to the project. It's been about, probably about five years ago, or maybe longer, but we had a project just across the street on property that Mr. Sonniger had on Rainier that, that where, if you recall, we wanted to, we wanted to develop that property into multifamily, and staff was supportive of that, but then residents, because we had residential development all around us, kept pointing to the other side of the road. They put it over on the, on the west side of Liberty because there's nothing over there. So, we're over on the west side of Liberty because there's not much there, and, and yet we're still concerned about traffic. And I, and I don't know how we're going to change the fact that the only places we're going to reasonably be able to locate the density is on the fringes, and does that require driving? Yes. This happens to be one where there are a lot of services that are within walking distance to it, and, and a transit available to it. So hopefully this will, this will transcribe into, into less traffic for, in some aspects, but I don't know where to do it. And I, and I think you have to be efficient if you, if you talk that since 15, if all we've converted is 31 acres, and that's only 400 units. And if I remember right, when the housing needs analysis was completed in 15, the shortage was about 3,000 units, I think, at the time we started that. So, we're, we're not making headway on that if we don't, if we don't use the sites that we can find efficiently. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any, any other questions you might have of us.
Counselor Anderson.
Just a short question. There's been talk about RM1 versus RM2, and as I understand, what you're saying is it would not be economically feasible to build to RM1 standards on this particular piece of property for the various matters you've discussed.
Yeah, two, so each of those traffics, those, each of those traffic signals that, that we're, we're going to be responsible for funding, and some of that money, some of the money will come back to us in SDCs, but each one of those in your, in your 309 list are set, are set out to be $550,000 apiece. So that's some, that's over a million for the two traffic signals. The pub, most apartment sites don't have public streets running through them, but because of the proximity to this and the streets that have been stubbed into this, because in the past, this was all viewed as being residential, we're going to build five streets in there, and we're going to, we're going to spend in, in public infrastructure for those five streets, because with those streets comes public water lines, becomes public sewer, becomes public drainage. We're going to spend another million-plus dollars for those improvements in there just for that. So if you take from my 300 and you knock us down to 221 or 224, you take a significant amount of revenue that could become, that could come available to fund, to help offset those improvements that on us, and our land cost is still the same. So nothing's, nothing's gotten less. So it's, it's really, it's really important to, to not.
So that was yes, wasn't it?
That's yes.
I'll check.
I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm.
I know, I appreciate the information, I do.
But I'm, I'm trying to, trying to give you as much information I can about this, so.
Okay. I'm going to close this public hearing unless you have more questions. Okay, public hearing is closed. Counsel, I'm going to take about a three-minute break. Is that be okay? Okay.
So I would like to make a motion for the city council to reverse the planning commission's decision for the comprehensive plan map change. I'd like to second.
Now, tell us what you're going to reverse to. Where are we headed? Or help us?
Maybe I gave her the wrong text there, but reversing the planning commission's approval would result in a denial.
Oh, so you want denial? Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry. Deny. Here we go.
Go ahead. Do you want to talk about it?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay.
So, one of my main concerns that came up, especially when the Sunny Side Neighborhood Association, they brought up their concern was that, you know, they're in support of, of the RM1 designation, but they're not supportive of RM2. That's one of the, one of the things that are, is concerning to me. Second, another issue that I have too is that, you know, with these, within that area, there's a large density that's already going to be occurring, and I, my concern is making sure that the area is still livable, and that it still follows and makes sure that the community members who live in that general space have that, what's the word I'm looking for? The livability in that residential area.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I would just like to say that the RM2 is, it's really a theoretical maximum that we would, that we would be approving. It's not an absolute. It's not what necessarily is going to be built, and it just seems like it opens up the flexibility. We have, we need a lot more housing, and this seems like not an unreasonable place to put multifamily housing and to make it a little more dense, so I'll be voting no on the motion.
Counselor Kazer.
Thank you. I also will not be voting for the motion, the reasons that Counselor Hoy stated, and also because it meets the findings of the criteria, and that's what we need to base our decision on.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I would also be voting against the motion, but I'm going to propose a substitute motion, that is staff recommendation.
Second, by Hoy. Want to discuss your motion? Or is it self-explanatory?
You know what, I think, the only I'll add is, it's, I believe it's true, you can address affordability only after you address the maximum, the number that you need for housing. And if we continue not to build housing, the prices are going to continue to go up. The only way to help bring down prices is to have more housing.
Ready. Counselor Cook.
For discussion, I just want to point out, I think we have two parallel tracks in this case with this development. The Neighborhood Association itself, we're not looking to, are not looking to stop multifamily units from coming in this area, but there are so many issues that are not addressed, either by the current standards or waiting in the wings, as was referred to by the planning commission, both with multifamily, with traffic impact analysis, both on Davis Road, on Mildred Road, with Liberty. There are so many issues, and also, I think, looking at the context of the area. This map is zoomed in, and if we zoom out to where both Skyline and Liberty are, and look at the number of not only multifamily units, but units that have been developed within this past year, because as you had pointed out previously in the testimony, these are large lots. So these are lots where it is going to be more cost-effective to build more units, to be able to develop more than the residential infill that we see. However, there's still no facilities to be able to accommodate the massive number of, we've talked about vehicle traffic, we've talked about access to public transit, which in this case for stops are not close by, and to be able to access facilities. The closest store for people to be able to purchase, the closest restaurant, the closest gardens, all of these things, I think, need to be taken in as the whole, as Counselor Leong has pointed out, to really look at the livability, because in the end, it's not just about providing people with a place to live, it's how that quality of life translates, with both the cost of the place that they're living and what they have access to, both inside and outside of their home. Now, I know those things are coming down the line with our Salem, but it's a bit disconcerning to be going through an approval process right now where if someone is living in that, in that development, how are they going to be able to access the places nearby safely? How are they going to be able to travel in that world, and how will they be limited based on the decisions that we're making today?
All righty. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor.
I just wanted to respond to Counselor Cook's. I appreciate your comments. I think where I'm coming from is, and this is what makes it difficult, is you have to take the case for where it is right now, and what the ordinances say, what the criteria say. You cannot say, well, in the future, we might do X, so we can't do something now. That's not how this process works, and I think that's the rub, and that's the challenge of all of this. So, while I completely agree, at the same time, it's, we have to be fair and prudent with our decision-making and with the evidence we have before us, and that's, that's the tough part.
Counselor?
I just have a clarification question. Are we voting on the substitute motion or on the original?
Substitute.
Thank you.
Okay, ready? All those in favor of the substitute motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. So, that's our final. Yeah, yay. Okay, well, there are special orders of business. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move staff recommendation.
What's the number?
3.3G.
3.3G. Seconded by Kazer.
Kazer, okay. Go ahead. Just a sec, Jim. Go ahead, Counselor.
Well, virtually all members of the council pulled this for, for our conversation. We've had work sessions on it. I know that staff is prepared to, to go into some detail. I just, this is a really significant step, and if we, if we take it tonight, if we take any step tonight, and it's worthy of a, a full vetting, and so that's why I pulled it and made the motion. So, I'll turn it over to the city manager, maybe for more detail.
Counselor Lewis, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I have actually a couple of questions of staff, and I think this might go to, well, whoever.
Yeah, like manager, have a minute.
At the last meeting, Mayor Bennett mentioned the likelihood, in fact, I think he was pretty sure of it, that this, the passage of these by the city council would be referred to the voters. My question is, if the city council at some point were to pass both of these measures, what is the process of, how many signatures do you need? How fast do you have to do it? What is the process of sending it to the voters?
Well, you'd have, I think what you do is change the language slightly, saying, prepare a ballot measure for.
Oh, no, no, my question is, as a practical matter, what is the process of referring something to the voters?
I think what he's asking, Mr. Mayor, if I can clarify, is if we, if we do this without sending it to the voters, what did, what would the members of the public have to do to, to refer it to the ballot? That's what he's asking.
It's collect a certain percentage of voters who voted for the mayor in the last election, a quarter would probably know best.
I believe it's 10% of the mayoral vote in the last election, so, and that's within a 30-day period from the time the ordinance is adopted by council. At that point, it would go to the next general election, which would be November 2020.
So, 10% of those that voted in the mayoral race last time?
Amy can speak up if I'm.
I believe in the last general election, they count those votes.
Okay.
How many is that?
Oodles.
Yeah.
10% oodles, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I don't have that information with me right now.
Probably about 5,000.
You would think the mayor would know that by heart.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
It was unanimous. What is 10% of?
160,000.
Yeah. We can, we could get you that number, but let's say it's in, it's in the probably 2,000 to 3,000 range, somewhere in there is probably what you're talking about. Not a, not a huge number, but certainly each of us know, because we have to go out and collect signatures to get out of the ballot, that it's a challenge. Yes, sir?
I would like to make amendment to Counselor Hoy's motion. In fact, I think I have two, but I'll start one at a time. I would move that the monthly rate for the operation fee be, as in the staff report, except for that non-residential rate would be $48.20 per month. I don't have a second, do I?
I have a second, sorry. I was reading.
Did you do it math? Okay.
Okay. We had this discussion at the work session on this, and I pointed out that the streetlight fee had that same ratio, and it didn't make any sense to me why we would change the ratio when each one of those things are basically, they're, they're establishing the same kind of method of obtaining money from the public based on their use of city resources, and with the streetlight fee, it was higher because the feeling was that the non-residential uses gained the greater benefit from the streetlights. And I would say that same would be true from the operating expense, that the non-residential units will gain more benefit from the operating fee, which will go into general support for many things that the city of Salem does for its public. So, if we're going to have a ratio of 4.8 or whatever it is from difference between the single family and the non-residential, it's, it seems to be consistent, we should apply the same ratio to the operating fee.
Well, we've all heard the discussion now. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
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 Nay. All right. Let's, let's, let's get some hands up here. I want to, I can't tell who's mumbling a and nay. I know that Matt and Tom both voted for it. Did anyone else? Okay. Motion failed.
I'm just, I'm not sure that we're ready for motions. It doesn't feel like we're at that. I mean, other than, we're still in the discussion phase.
Well, the counselor, the counselor has a substitute he wanted to try. He can try again.
I understand.
He can, he can keep working you.
If I could ask the city manager a question, maybe this would help get us to a better place. Earlier today, I asked the city manager to look at options for the operating fee, reducing it to $8 a month with a commensurate reduction in other rates, and perhaps slight modification to the employee paid payroll tax to offset that reduction. Could you speak to that and talk to the rest of the counselors about some of those members?
Certainly. Actually, I would like Bob Behrendt, our CFO, to speak to that. We have the, the revenue equivalency, however, there are some implementation considerations that I think are, are part of the answer.
Just to re, just to rephrase that is, we wanted to say, how we could raise the same amount of money if we reduce the operating fee from 10 to $8, how much would we have to increase the payroll tax? And currently, the payroll tax is at 0.3%, and to generate in the first full year that we collect revenues from both taxes, and remember they're staggered, we get the operating fee first and then the payroll tax later, we would have to increase it from point, from 0.3% to 0.36%. So, a change from $10 in the operating fee to $8, along with a 0.36% increase, our payroll tax, would generate the same $16.2 million that we have in the current proposal, which is $10 operating fee and 0.3% payroll tax.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I don't disagree at all with what Counselor Hoy has said here, that we need more discussion on this, but here's where we were. We had a motion to adopt the staff recommendation, and, and, you know, unless, either we vote that up or down, or we start having further discussions and make different motions. You know, so, I'm not unaware of the fact that there's been some discussion of the $8 and then a higher fee, but are we prepared to make any kind of final decision today without any further discussion? So, you know.
Well, I, I think if Counselor, any of you would like to advance, try, try out some ideas, see what your colleagues say to you about.
Well, I tried out one, and I didn't make it.
Want to try another?
Yes, I will. I'll try another one. I move as an amendment to the motion to adopt the staff recommendation that the operating fee be indexed to the CPI and and increased as per the CPI increase on a yearly basis.
Who seconded? Oh, Kazer, I'm sorry.
Yeah. There's lots of things that are tied to the CPI, and I don't know whether it goes up or doesn't go up on a yearly basis. But once again, we're attempting to increase our revenue, and this seems to be a way to do that without subject to some third third-party outside configuration that is made.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually supportive of this concept, very much so, actually. I just wanted to kind of back up for just a moment and remind folks that who might be watching or paying attention to this, that we're in a dire situation, and we need to we need to generate some new revenue, or we're going to be significantly cutting services. And the reason that I spoke with and colleagues have suggested reducing the operating fee and increasing the the employee paid payroll taxes, because the employee paid payroll tax actually taps into a new tax base, so to speak, of folks who don't currently contribute to the city budget. And a lot of folks who work here but don't live here, use our services but don't help pay for them. And we have a lot of state employees. We have a lot of people that come from outside the area to work in the city of Salem, and they don't help pay for our services. And so what this employer employee paid payroll tax does is it helps broaden the the burden. And just to make sure everybody understands the math, like, because I've seen some decimal places can get confusing when you're doing percentages. So if we're talking about the 0.3% payroll tax, that which is what was initially proposed, if you make $50,000 a year, that's $150 a year that you'd be paying. And with the new numbers that the CFO has discussed, if we were to reduce the operating fee to $8 and increase the employee paid payroll tax to 0.3% 0.36%, that would be $180 a year for a person who makes $50,000. So just to put that, I want to make sure that everybody puts that all in perspective. We're talking a third of a percent, not 3%, not 30%, a third of 1%. So that it's really important that people understand the numbers that we're talking about. So.
Counselor Anderson.
I agree with everything Counselor Hoy said, especially the part that we have to increase our revenue, or we are going to be making some pretty deep cuts, and we're going to have to be making them pretty quickly. That expenses are getting close to revenue, and we've been warned that every year. And, you know, it's going to happen sometime sooner rather than later. I could support some sort of lowering in the $10 fee to say something like $8 if the we had the ratio applied. And see, all that, I've lost on the ratio on the $10, so I suppose I'll make I'll make another motion then.
Okay.
I move that the monthly rate.
I think we have one on the.
Oh, we got we still have I I move to amend, I guess.
Now, let's.
Because we have Chris's motion on.
If I could just suggest that we actually just do a ratio as a policy rather than a number, and that's that was the concern I had with the initial.
Oh, I'm happy with the ratio. I just couldn't figure it out on the fly. I got I got the numbers.
If I may, Counselor, please, to provide a little more detail of from from Bob's answer earlier, that amount that we shared with you does assume a change in the ratio to $6 for multifamily and $24 for commercial. So it would be 8, 6, 24.
At the risk of not saying ratios, I'm going to amend the motion that it would be end up with a monthly rate of $8 for residential utility accounts, $6 per multifamily unit, and $24. No, what was the? $24. That's three times. I will my my motion is $8 for residential utility accounts, $6 for multifamily unit, and 4.82 times $8 for non-residential accounts.
Second? Okay.
We've discussed this.
Yeah.
I'd like to, Kazer would like. Make a friendly friendly amendment to your motion, Counselor Anderson, and that is, single family, $8 a month, multifamily at $6.40 a month. And that is 0.8 ratio, which is what we've been considering. So you have the so $8 a month is the ratio, 0.8 for multifamily and 4.82 for non-residential accounts.
I'll agree with that. That's the same number eventually. Yeah.
So it's seconded, too?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, now, we're amending that that main motion right now. Is that what we're doing? This isn't a substitute. This is an amendment to the main motion.
Correct.
Right. Yes, Counselor.
Am I allowed to answer, ask a question?
Absolutely.
Just so clear on what this motion means?
Thank you.
Okay. So, right now, we're just making a motion specifically about the operating fee. We're not even touching the employee paid payroll tax. Okay.
And if I could just clarify one more thing, all we're doing tonight is directing staff to come back with a proposed ordinance. We're not actually enacting anything tonight. There's nothing that's being enacted here. We're just simply directing staff.
Go ahead, Counselor Rossi.
So this may be back to staff of what decrease does this have? What impact will this decrease have on the one-year gap here? We've been talking about an $8 million gap for one year. And I'm not able to do that math in my head, figure out what this changes. And because we're going to lose some because what I'm thinking of is that if we it's maybe something. So a secondary question, can we enact it at one level now, and then when the operating the employee tax comes online, switch reduce this one and allow the payroll tax to fill the gap, so we don't lose services for a year, basically?
I think I can answer both quickly. The 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 rate that was proposed, the operating fee rate was $10, and in a full year, it would generate 8.2 million. So for every dollar we take off of that, we lose $820,000, right? So we're dropping it $2. So it'd be $1,640,000. Is that right? So.
And the increase to the to the ratio doesn't really help.
Now, it will offset it. We've done the the we've done the analysis individually, and we could pull it up on the screen and give you an exact number. But I think it's an excellent question, because what comes first in our proposal? We said this year, the one that we just started today, this fiscal year, we will get six months of the benefit of the operating fee, because we'll have it begun in January of 2020. So we'll get six months in this fiscal year. So if we drop it from 10 to $8, we'll lose $820,000 in this fiscal year alone. And then, in the full next fiscal year, we'll lose the $1,640,000 before the payroll tax even kicks in. So so your first question was, what would be the impact of dropping it to $8? And the impact would be the $800,000 this year and the $1,600,000 next. So about $2.4 million. But it will be offset by the multiplier going from three times, three times $10,000, to 4.82 times the proposed $8. And I think Josh can do that for us real quick.
Josh Eggleson with the Budget Office. So the total impact, it goes from 8.2 to 7.1 in a full year, the first full year, so a $1.1 million decrease with that ratio set up.
With the 4.82?
And if we take it for 18 months for implementation, then we get to 1.65 or something, 1.65.
Could you repeat the question?
If you take you said that's for a year, right? And you, Mr. Behrendt was just saying that it's actually going to be about 18 months before the employee tax comes on. So then we take half of that again to for the full impact? Is that right?
That is correct. So so 1.7 would be the the lost revenue.
Okay, now, we've got Counselor Anderson's motion. I'm going to view yours, Counselor Kazer, as just a friendly amendment to his. So we're do we're dealing with Counselor Anderson's motion. Which is to amend the underlying motion, the main motion, which is to move this stuff forward as written here. This just changes as written at this point. Is that clear? Comfortable? Okay.
It's reducing it down to eight, right? So his his proposal was eight, and then he's proposing the ratio change, right?
Yes, it's reducing it to eight, but increasing the ratio from to residential from three times, excuse me, increasing the ratio to non-residential from three times residential to 4.82 times residential.
Okay.
And does it tie it to CPI or not?
Well, I made that motion, and I'm not exactly sure what happened to that.
I know, I'm not.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Well, you kept changing it. I think you changed it enough that I'm not sure the CPI survived the changes you did to it.
Okay, well, then, I would, I don't know, city attorney, can I amend my amendment? Or should I just do a second one on the CPI?
Why don't we just vote on this one?
And then we'll then we'll get to the CPI.
We'll get this cleared right away. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Three nays. Okay? Motion passes, by the way.
The amendment passes.
The amendment passes. I'm sorry. Now, do you want to throw the CPI on the table?
Counselor Lewis, maybe.
Oh, no, I think you ought to finish that.
Let's get this money part fixed first.
I amend I I move to amend the amended motion to tie in the operating fee on a yearly basis to the CPI.
Seconded by Hoy. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Two nays. Okay. Motion passes. Okay. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I have a question. At what point would we discuss referring this to the voters? Would that be after this is brought back? Or do we have to do that before?
I would suggest that if you want to find out whether it's worth talking about at any future date, you might want to just make a motion now. And it would look probably a lot like essentially amending this, the main motion, to have staff return with an ordinance prepared for a ballot measure to be submitted to the voters at the earliest possible date.
Yeah, and I so move.
Okay. Okay.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
He made the motion.
Yeah, I'll second that.
You know, it's my background is business. When your revenues fall, irregardless of what reason in business, you have no choice, no choice. You cut your expenses, or you go out of business. I don't believe that we have heard enough, and we're talking about changing the essence of these proposals substantially tonight. And I and I recognize the need. In fact, I would vote for both of them. But I I believe that it's something that should be sent to the voters. And the only other thing I would comment is, if we are in such a crisis situation that we can't afford to send this out to the voters, then we should have been talking about this a year ago.
Counselor Kazer?
Thanks. Just to get clarification on the motion, are you saying to refer both of these revenue options to the voters?
Yes.
Just to make that clear.
Yeah, I I support I support the amendment to the motion to send it to the voters. I think whenever you're going to reach into somebody's pocket, you ought to ask permission. I think it's just real simple. It's just a fundamental question of of allowing somebody allowing the public to take a look at this. We have a great, I listened to the discussion, great case. Nobody's made that case to the public yet. It's just not been made. And I know people go to their neighborhood groups and talk about it, and we're getting a reasonable amount of feedback. But I don't think the public's aware of what we're talking about here. I think it's a great case that we can make. We're going to go out there, pass this, and I think it will take just a matter of weeks for a motivated group to pull together the signatures, to force this to the ballot, which will protract the length here. We under this, I think, under the counselor's motion, we would have control over when this goes to the ballot. If the public is forced to force it to the ballot by collecting votes, it will be it'll add a year to the to the mix. And I'm still not confident that we have a firm agreement with the state of Oregon on the payroll tax. I'm just not convinced they're going to collect that for us. I don't know what the status is. I haven't heard a clear report on it yet. But that one, I think, is just a pipe dream anyway. So but if you're going to do it to the utility bills, I'd be very, very careful about just forcing it. We've done it once with the streetlights. So, yeah.
So I just wanted to respond a little bit about how long we have been talking about this, because we did have a task force with many meetings over many months. We set that up based on what came in, the new council came in, we wanted to have a strategic plan to help support how we were going to do this. We've taken a very public and strategic approach to get to this point, that we know we needed it. How we do it is was the purpose was the point of all of that work. And now that we know the options, we need to act. And that, I think, is the reason that it's taken this long, and it has been a very public conversation. And as far as the case goes, I feel like just because we vote for it doesn't mean we can't still make the case to the voters that we would if we referred it to them. We it doesn't prevent us from having the same campaign that we would have with with the with the voter ballot. And we do have a great case, and and I think that would help us.
I you're making a really good point. I chaired the last this revenue task force and the last one about 20 years ago. We we increased arrived at a proposal with about 30 people on that committee from everywhere. And it was to raise the hotel motel tax, put it to the voters. The recommendation from this task force, put it to the voters. I'm fascinated that everyone sort of saying, well, the task force recommended all this, and we had all well, they also recommend put it to the voters, if you read their recommendation. Now, why that one gets thrown out and everything else gets is somehow set in stone, I don't know. But that one was a good, strong statement of send it to the voters. I but if I'm wrong, good, good. If I'm wrong and nobody refers it, good. I just think it's a mistake, because if they do, it will create a worse hole than we've got today. Yes, sir?
We've had this discussion on other things before, other matters, whether or not they should be referred to the voters. And I'm looking at the state law and the city law, which indicates quite clearly that certain things should be to the voters. For example, in the city charter, any remuneration or salary for counselors has to go to the city charter. It's changing the city charter, so therefore has to go to the city. In state law, a gas tax has to go to the voters. So I'm keeping in mind a legal principle that says if and it's a legislative principle that says if a number of items are discussed and some items aren't discussed, that means they were deliberately left out. So these two things, the the operating fee and the employee paid payroll tax, could have been statutorily mandated that we go to the voters, and they weren't. So that, to me, to me means that as the council, we can make that decision. I'd also add that we're in a representative democracy. We're not a pure democracy. We each got elected because the voters, A, knew our positions on various things. For example, in each one of my campaigns, I discussed that we need to find new ways and increase our revenue. And B, they trust our judgment to make decisions. So I would vote to go ahead and I will vote against the amended motion, I guess I would say. say.
Okay. Counsel Kizer?
Thank you. I agree with Counselor Anderson's comments that we were elected to do those hard things, and this is one of the hard things that we need to do. It's our fiduciary responsibility to do that. To Counsel Lewis's point, if I was running a business, I would be looking like may have to raise new revenue and doing whatever I could to do that. I think we've made the cuts we can make. We can give specifics to Mr. Hoffert, testified earlier. We can give him specifics. I've got him written right here. So, pick your poison for next year. For your police officer layoffs, number of fire stations will be closing, closing the library, all park maintenance, whatever those combo of things are, they will happen if we don't do anything right now. I will not be supporting the motion. I think we have a process in place under the Oregon Constitution. If people so feel that their council has made the wrong choice to do that, and we can let that process play out if, if that's what happens.
Yeah.
But there is a process in place, but we need to take action now. I think council over the last 10 years has really been neglectful in doing the hard thing. And it's, and it's, it's the good hard things, but they're hard things still to do. So, we've made the cuts. We haven't looked at raising the revenue, nor have we tried.
All right. Well, I would argue with you that, that this story of the cuts next year, I've heard that for 20 years, and it's always coming. It's always coming. It's five years away, it's two years away.
I'll just add that this is coming from the city.
Although I do think some of the things you added to the budget, you probably have pushed it forward quickly, more quickly. Okay. Y'all ready to vote? This on Lewis's amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion fails. Okay, we're back to the main motion as amended. No?
No. I, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm going to go with another amendment here.
Okay.
And it relates to the, to the employee paid payroll tax. Sure. Yeah, I, I am going to have, Counsel Kizer asked if we could have a discussion, and I would like to have one, and that's related to Mr. Barron. The, the material that you gave us on the ratios, specifically the Eugene ratio, was based on the fact that it was going to be $10, $8, and $30. So, I would like to see some sort of increase along the lines of the progressive rate structure in Eugene or some other progressive rate structure, but I'm not sure what amounts to make it, because we've just now changed to $8 and $6 and 4.82 times $6.
Yes. So...
I mean, I understand that's putting you on the spot.
We have $8 for the residential, we have 8 times .8, which is $6.40 for the multifamily.
Use your microphone, please.
I'm so sorry. And then we have 8 times 4.82, which I come up with 38.56. So, so I understood that that passed with only three nays, and then the CPI also passed. So, what, what would you like beyond those two? And I think Josh has given us the impact of those as well.
I defer to Counsel Kizer, because she has something she needs to say, and I think she does.
Well, so, what I would like to, I guess, maybe, and this is probably going to have to come back from staff possibly, is to look at excluding those minimum wage earners from the payroll tax.
They are.
And, and keeping that simple, and then having the rate be the same for anybody earning over minimum wage. Because if we go to the tiered system, I think Department Administrative Services or Department of Revenue, sorry, they already said that's going to complicate the collection and add more time. So, if we keep it simple, and by virtue of it being a percentage, it's already building in that progressiveness. But I would like to, I guess my motion would be to exempt minimum wage earners from the payroll tax.
Second. Okay, you have a second. Discussion, beyond the discussion you've already had, Counsel Leung.
Quick question, like, if we end up giving the exemption to the low minimum wage workers, would that be based on today's current minimum wage, or what it will be going forward? Just blanket, okay?
Counsel.
I certainly agree that minimum wage should be exempted from this. I'm looking at an attachment two to the staff memo, which gives a progressive rate structure in that city to the south. Minimum wage is exempt, greater than minimum wage to $15 is .30 percent, and greater than $15 is .44 percent. That is what I would like to see. So, I will vote against Counsel Kizer's motion, only because I think the, the higher income earners ought to pay more, not because I'm against exempting minimum wage.
Okay. Okay, we have Counsel Kizer's motion. Counsel Rouse.
Can I just clarify too, that whatever this is, we're still targeting the 16.2 goal as opposed to the same numbers when the staff report comes back? Or is that not understood? Because the .3 will now no longer fill the full gap, as we were discussing, so that would have to change to potentially .36 or whatever it is. So, is that understood as part of this? Or do we need to make another motion to clarify that as well? Another amendment or whatever?
Certainly that direction.
Who started this? Kizer?
I just, if we could just vote on just whether or not to exclude minimum wage regardless of what the rate is, but just, you know, just exclude minimum wage earners.
Are you still in the discussion?
Good, on the minimum wage earners, yes.
So, I'm trying to find, I'm conferring with staff, I'm trying to find in the attachment report, the loss of revenue from that exclusion, just to double check. Thank you.
So, if you look at attachment two, the $20,000 exemption is roughly what that would be. So, just about $1.1 million.
And given the, I know we're considering these separately, given the change in operating fee that was proposed, how much would that leave us short for the, okay? Thank you, Matt.
Because the other one was $1.1 million also. So, can you speak into our mic, please?
You really can't tell what you're saying.
Thank you.
Well, what are you saying?
She was asking if it, what was the previous reduction?
What'd you tell her?
$1.1 million, which was what Josh said previously.
Okay.
So, they're both $1.1 million, essentially.
Okay. Are we still, are we still going to do this exemption vote? You ready to go? Exemption on minimum wage. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Yeah, I'm puzzled here too, because the, the, the motion was only to, amended motion was to exempt minimum wage earners from the payroll tax.
Yeah.
So, I still am interested in, in some sort of progressive increase ala the Eugene rate structure, but I don't know what figures to use, because we changed the 10, 8, 30 to 8, 6, 30, whatever it is, the figure, 28, whatever. So, I don't know how to make that motion.
Counselor, I, I think you could maybe do a more policy-like motion, sort of, you guys rebalance this on this to bring it.
Yeah, that's a good.
Make it work.
Go, go ahead, Karen.
What I was going to, I won't put in a motion quite yet, but my suggestion is that we give, with the changes to the operating fee, we give staff time to make those calculations, not under pressure.
Yeah, bring them back.
And then to bring it back at the next, to continue it to the next.
They'll bring it back to you.
That we know what the numbers we're actually looking at are.
As you're part of your final ordinance, and then you can evaluate if you want to jigger the numbers at that time. How's that?
Yeah, so, do I need to make a motion for that? I'm happy to.
Yeah, why don't you?
Okay. I move that the staff return to us when they come back with the proposed ordinance with the progressive rate structure that will make up the difference that, the loss that was caused by the reduction of the operating fee.
Second?
Second by Kizer. Okay? All right. No further discussion?
You going to vote on the motion?
Let's vote on that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. One no. Okay.
Now, we're back to the main motion.
Now, we're back to the main motion as amended. Okay? So, what we've got now is instructions to staff to put together this now resolve, some of the, well, they're going to resolve some of the issues that came up in terms of both the operating fee and the payroll tax, and have it prepared for you as an ordinance for you to vote to impose it as quickly as you can. Is that kind of what I think we're headed? Okay. Okay. You ready? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Two noes. Motion passes. All righty. What do we got next?
Information reports.
We got information reports. Everybody read their information reports? We've got a few minutes left to comment or ask questions if you'd like. Counsel Leung.
I have a question for, like, maybe, I'm not exactly sure who I should be asking, maybe Norman Wright, specifically about item number 6.2B, the, the library-related issues. So, I understand that the report that we have in front of us is just a report from, that the staff had collected from May. What is the likelihood that the staff would be able to, for this month of July, to continue doing that at this time?
Norman Wright, Community Development Director. So, the question, again, if I understand it, is what is the possibility of staff to continue this report for the next month?
Yeah, because since there was quite a few number of folks who were here testifying saying that the May tracking report was not a representation of what's been happening to the library, and having just one month versus, I would like to see like another month to see what that would look like, keeping in mind that the only books that should be removed would be for, as the conditions that we've described before.
In terms of producing another month's worth of that reporting, we have a pragmatic and a practical issue that we can't overcome. From a pragmatic standpoint, we won't be able to deliver you a report that can actively reflect what we do with the collection, because we are now shifting, we have to shift, the staff, City Librarian Sarah Stroll, have to shift towards preparing this collection for relocation, or storage, or whatever's going to come as we near a date for relocation of our service. So, from a pragmatic standpoint, we can't deliver this same kind of report, because we won't be under this, under any sort of normal circumstances effective actually this month. That's, that's item number one as to why we can't deliver another report of this nature for this month. The second reason, though, involves staff capacity. We simply don't have the time, since we are preparing for that relocation in order to do this. This has taken a significant amount of staff time. It's outside of our normal automated processes, and so staff do not have that bandwidth that they can also, since they have to prepare for this relocation that's soon to be underway in some form or fashion. So, unfortunately, we cannot do this report again for this month.
Counsel Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Wright, I did have a question. You alluded to the movement of the collection, and I know that's talked about this evening as well. It's my recollection that when we had originally talked about the original bond, there was no budget in that bond for relocation of the collection or movement of the collection. And council at that time did address the library, asking if there would need to be a move for the collection at that point, and we were told that the seismic retrofitting could be completed without moving the collection long-term. That was my recollection, which was why in the budget for the bond, there were no funds allocated for that particular event.
So, so that predates me a little bit, and I see both.
Yeah, that, that's not exactly correct. The bond, the relocation would have been an ineligible expense in the bond measure. We do have funds available for the relocation, and that issue, the specific location, will be coming to council at your next meeting. And with that will be, will be information regarding the relocation of the, of the collection and the other library services. So, I think what, what Director Wright is referring to is more just the capacity of staff than it is a budgetary issue. We just, the staff is, is preparing for the move, and that, that May tracking report that you had is a level of detail that we normally don't generate. Unfortunately, our, it's, it's not an automated process, and it's rather labor-intensive, staff-intensive, and, and that intensive use of staff time is really, as, as, as the director said, is really problematic when we're also planning a relocation.
Just an additional follow-up, if I may. The splashboard reports that are available for the Salem Public Library Advisory Board, which do have tracking numbers, and those are completed for the Library Advisory Board, would those be available for council as that is normally part of what's brought up in front of the Public Library Advisory Board?
As just a standard matter of, I guess, principle, anything that's available to lab is certainly available to the council. So, hopefully that can answer that question. But I could certainly have City Librarian Sarah Stroll speak a little bit more to that if needed.
Thank you.
She's coming down now, so she can provide some more insight.
Hi, everyone. So, there is no longer a splashboard. The lab decided that they did not want to see the full reporting. So, I do think we still do some of the tracking on that, and we actually did even more detailed tracking from January until April this year. That wasn't the level that the May report was, but we did have a lot of detailed tracking that is available and is on the lab websites, and I'd be happy to send that along to everyone so you can see what that looks like. It's basically what you see in the 135 pages of reasoning, and I think that is one of the things that the selectors wanted to make sure that you saw. But we are taking to, let me backtrack a little, we are taking to lab a dashboard in their August meeting so that they can determine what statistics they would like to see quarterly. They had recommended that they wanted to see some statistics quarterly, so we are taking that to them.
Counsel Hoi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to back up to the question of whether or not we were going to be moving the collection. That was a, that was an initial question. We, there was some thought that perhaps we could do this retrofit without moving the collection, but it was determined a few months ago that that was not an option, and so we would have to move the collection, so.
Okay. Counsel Anderson?
I have a question for the librarian, and I'm a little confused. I'm holding up this, which is what's next to the collection maintenance tracking report. Are all these pages two-sided with, I don't know, 15 to 20 books per page? Is that just from May?
Those are all the items that were evaluated in May. That doesn't mean they were removed.
Yeah.
It means they were invalidated.
No, I, I see that a lot of them weren't, and a lot of them were, and a lot, and the reasoning.
And there are some magazines included. There are also, go through what is called the Snags process, which is a more automated process.
Yeah, I read Snags. What happens with Snags? I know what Snags are. I don't know what Lucky Day is, but that's, comes up a whole lot.
Lucky Day are the non-holdable bestsellers that people, it's your lucky day if you walk in.
Oh, your lucky day, you're lucky day, you won the lottery, you get to read this book.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I could think of some more.
And that's a fine collection system.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, what you're saying is this report here in May, and, and April you reviewed this many, and February you reviewed this many?
It depends on what we're doing at the time.
Yeah.
And what the parts of the collection are. But typically, it would probably be about that many, yes.
Wow, okay.
Okay? Any, yes, counsel?
So, I just wanted to clarify, or during this move, while staff is busy and whatnot, are we still continuing to review all these books? Or are we basically, I mean, we talked about storage or moving or something like that? Is that basically on hold? Because I know the motion was to put it on hold until we reviewed this report, but is that still essentially going to be in place until the relocation stuff is done?
So, if I may, at this point, we know that there's not going to be a level of collection maintenance that we can do. We are going to be packing and storing, and once the stuff is in storage, we can't do any collection maintenance on it. So, you know, and it's going to be a couple of years after it gets pulled out of storage that we can't do any collection maintenance on it, because we're going to have to reestablish the statistics again.
Are you saying effectively then, the, the culling of this collection is pretty much over until the, we're back into the building?
To, anything that would be called the big weed is definitely not happening. Yeah. I would say that.
But what's that? I, I'm not sure. Big weed, I, I think that came from a comment of yours, and I want to make sure I understand. Is this the? and I want to make sure I understand, is this the call, you're, nothing's going to be thrown away?
So we would still try to, they still want to do some collection maintenance.
Okay.
You know, some of the selectors still, you know, for our adult fiction, for example.
But is it going to be based on circulation? What's it going to be based on?
It's going to be based on our crew methods of all the different things that you see in this report.
Is it going to be as aggressive as we've had reported?
No, we don't have time.
Okay. That's, I think that's really what I'd like to understand is, this really has come to an end for a couple of years at the level that has got people very, very concerned, as you know.
Right. And that was to try and prepare us for this move and storage.
I, yeah, no, I understand what's going on, but I want to make sure that if we're going to have to kind of report back from an information report, I'd like to understand what I'm reporting.
Right.
And I'm reporting that pretty much, we've gone about as far as we can go in this.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's going to stop for a couple of years because you've got more to do with other projects.
Yeah.
That'll keep you busy and away from that collection.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thanks. Counselor.
Okay. I'm very appreciative of this because, as it's clear, this is a very emotional issue on every side of it, both from the anecdotal reports we get, as well as the studies that we have gotten, both from the, you know, librarian associations and from you internally and from the people outside who are looking at this. And it seems to me that if in fact we are, in effect, circumstances have forced us to not to continue to do the culling, or the weed, or the collection dispersment policy, or whatever you want to call it, we're not going to do this for the next couple of years.
No.
And if that's the situation, then I think that gives us time for a little more dialogue because I am concerned about a number of things that we don't need to raise right tonight, but I've written down a number of questions I have, including the 5 percent guideline versus the 10 percent reduction, the crew standards, are we really following the years in, you know, non-circulation, 1 to 3, 3 to 5, all those sort of things.
Right.
We don't have to resolve those tonight, but in the next time, when in effect we're in neutral on this, we can discuss all those things at a greater level of detail.
Right. And we plan on doing a strategic planning process during the interim time where we would have lots of time to talk about all of those things with everyone.
Well, I think we would, as you look at any kind of strategic planning process, I think we'd really like to be at least working with you on it.
Yeah.
To make sure that the, the level of involvement is as high as we become comfortable with, if that's okay.
I would love for that to happen. We are doing a bridge plan right now to get us through the next, until we're in the interim space.
How do you liaison directly with the council? Who are you working with directly in council?
The big guy.
Norman.
Yeah.
Okay, we may, we may want to look at even a little subcommittee of really high, we've got some very interested counselors here who I think would love to meet with you once in a while as it fits with your schedule.
And we are working with the State Library on creating a process that was going to involve you in the beginning.
Good. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Leung.
Thank you for being here today.
Of course.
You know, when I read through this report, one of the things I was planning on doing was raising a motion today, but as I've been hearing from people in the community, especially from your, specific from you, that at this time, because they are, the staff is packing the books to get ready for the move, that there will be no removal of books, remind you, is that what I'm hearing, at least?
What you would see is, there are some areas of the collection that, the teen area of the collection is very tight. They have to continue to do some level of maintenance. However, that is going to be a very, what you would see in this May report, this level, not a, not any sort of aggressive, as Mayor Bennett said, level of collection maintenance. Right. So there are a few areas, and none of those areas have come up as a question. And adult nonfiction, we really won't have much time.
Okay. So I am still concerned about the library collection policy.
Okay.
And I would like to eventually submit a motion concerning the policy and have a further discussion about this, and if it's possible, at the August 12 city council meeting. Or would that not be a time to?
Let's talk about it a little bit, but I hear what you're saying, and see if there is something we can do with. I think part of it is we need to fully understand, we've done a collection policy motion here within the past couple of years, and here we are with this problem. And I think we need to really make sure we've spent the time. That's why I'm kind of thinking it'd be really good to have a subcommittee of council that really get, and I put you on it, but is to really get focused on this and come back with a real clear, I know Counselor Cook has tremendous interest here, Counselor Hoy, to really make sure we're doing what we will be comfortable with and our constituents will be comfortable with as we look at this. But I think we're going to, we're going to want a motion at some point. I'm just not sure, the 12th might be too quick.
Okay.
But, but I hear what you're, where you're headed.
Okay.
I think it sounds good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for the report. Let's go to first readings and see if we can beat the 10 o'clock hour.
Ordinance Bill number 819, an ordinance declaring certain territory located at 1235 Hoffman Road Northeast annexed to the city of Salem prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Marion County Fire District Number One and the East Salem Sewer and Drainage District.
Counselor Hoy.
I move staff recommendation.
Second. Second by Kizer. A discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Ordinance Bill number 919, an ordinance declaring certain territory located at 4700 Block of Lancaster Drive Northeast annexed to the city of Salem prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Marion County Fire District One and the East Salem Sewer and Drainage District.
Counselor Osik.
I move staff recommendation.
Second. Second by Hoy. A discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And ordinance Bill number 719, an ordinance relating to human rights, amending SRC 97.010, 97.060, and 97.085, and creating 97.065. Counselor Cook.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Kizer.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Denke is absent. Counselor Leung.
Aye.
Counselor Osik.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Unanimous. Motion passes. All right. I don't, I don't see any further business. Is there anyone here that wanted to address council that didn't get a chance to sign up? Very good. We are adjourned.